Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, August 31st, 2022. This is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Act 2022. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press *9 to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Did you see there are these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak? We are meeting at the Gloucester High School at 32 Wesley O. Johnson Road. Can I just say something?
Yes.
Kaia Kavellis is from Gloucester High School. She just needs to get moved as a panelist. Maria, did you hear that? We have a Gloucester High School Student Council representative, Kaia, who should be a panelist.
Okay, I'll move her over.
I was State Commission of Gloucester Public Schools. It is for all students to be successful, engaged, like one of our learners, and I ask that you stand and join me this way. By the United States, we, public, stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, never being justice far off. Resort of business is oral communications. If there is anybody in attendance that would like to speak, now is your opportunity. And I will read the guidelines. The public shall have the opportunity at every school committee meeting to be heard, every regular school committee meeting, to be heard under oral communications. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has requests or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. So, if there's anybody that would like to speak, now is the opportunity. Okay, saying that, we will go on to recognitions. Anybody have any recognitions? How about happy first week of school for all the teachers and staff and excited kids? Seem to be excitement all around. I can imagine pictures were nice of different schools and...
I have some photos to show. I can show them now or show them later.
You were going to show them during your superintendent's report? Yeah, later, fine.
Okay.
With that being said, I just want to recognize our teachers for our stay at school, teachers in Paris and all of the staff that were there. The momentum that was in that room, everybody was happy and they were very compassionate and shows and your talks to the group, so.
I would give credit where credit's due, Rachel Rex and Greg Bach. I don't think they inspired, but they were very good at convincing me how it was the right thing to do, especially after two years of, you know, being here but still not together like we can be. And it was a great, great, just advice and counsel and so on and so on. It was a great morning, I thought. Great morning. Thank you for being there. Mayor Verga, Kathy, thank you for speaking. I think folks really appreciate your remarks. Absolutely.
And I really appreciate your remarks about assistance and Greg Bach. Mr. Humble.
Yeah, your life loves to spot.
Yeah, it was a great first day. Really a lot of good energy in front of you. Okay, anybody have any items on the consent agenda that they would like to remove? I will do the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved it second. We'll call vote. Is Maria staying with us or is she not?
She's with us.
Oh, okay. That's Maria.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yeah.
Yes.
Chairperson Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin? Is he here?
No.
Not here?
He's remote.
Oh, yes?
Yeah. Mr. Mel- Bill Melvin is?
Oh, sorry. No.
He's not here?
Bill is not here yet.
Okay. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
And Mayor Verga?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Were you muted?
Yeah. Consent agenda is approved. Next, we move on to deliberations on education issues and superintendent's report. We'll turn it over to Superintendent Ross.
Just trying to figure out.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry. We have a student here. You're not on the agenda, but we are happy you're here and would love to hear from you. So, Kaia, you want to tell us what's going on the first couple of days?
Sure. Um, so, as we're getting back into the swing of school and stuff, we have a new five-day schedule at school. So, every Monday is the same every week. Um, and that's replacing our seven-day schedule. We also have the courtyard open for kids to eat lunch in, which we didn't get to have a lot last year. So, now we have that back and that's been getting a lot of people outside. Um, then we have freshman elections coming up for student council and NHS is coming back in full swing with tutoring hours. And the plans for future pep rallies and spirit weeks are in the works and should be ready to have done by the end of September. And that's like all I have.
Appreciate meeting you. Welcome, and we look forward to seeing more of you as your time allows and your six to report. Good luck for your senior year, too.
Thanks, Kaia.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay. You're also welcome to do whatever else it is that you would like to be doing instead of staying with us. Thank you. Uh, okay. We will now go to the superintendent's report.
Ben, we can't hear you. No. Are you attached?
Oh, we turned the volume down on that.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize Greg was the one attached to... You're all set. Go ahead.
So, oh, you can hear me?
Yep.
Michael?
Okay. Just that one, like always. Okay. Right. Here we go. Me to open my screen here. Actually, before we do that, I'll just say we're off to a great start. It's all, it's a lot of smiles, a lot of hugs, a few tears. It's okay. It happens first day of school, first couple of days of school on many levels. But I'll show some photos in a moment. You know, there are always a few hiccups here and there. But, you know, so far it sounds like transportation is off to a good start. Working on bus yesterday was kind of a bummer the first day, but that's fixed and fixable. But generally, that definitely seems, and certainly a lot of smiles and energy and excitement. So, in great weather, the rain cleared after O'Malley and GHS arrival today. So, Toronto School is pretty good. But yeah, so far we're off to a good start and folks, I think, are... There's a nice sense of excited to be back. So.
And normal.
Yeah, and it took me a little while to realize that, oh, yeah, when you start the first day of school and you don't have masks, that's the way it's supposed to be, you know? So, I sort of, I didn't, it just seemed normal. It's normal that way. It's been a bit of a while. I remember like, oh, that hasn't been the case, so. All right, so let's show you some photos. I've been able to go to all the schools at this point. Some is longer than others, sort of depending on when arrival happens. With this, but, um, and so some, I took some of these other folks, these, this East Gloucester. They're in some ways last first day at that building anyway, but they got a great future ahead of them. Here's, one thing you'll see as folks begin school is there's a fair bit of lining up, like with your teacher to help you walk in or help you get to know your teacher or meet your teacher for the first time. So, you have, from the left, you have got East Gloucester, Beeman, and then Bets there. So, lots of folks smiling and talking and sharing and laughing and people grabbing old friends and that sort of thing and just neat stuff. This, what these static photos don't really show is how much energy and movement is happening. The kids were buds, basically, so and so were families. So, you have here veterans, so outside veterans, a few friends there sort of reconnecting. Just this is this morning, veterans down there in the middle. Just there was a lot of energy and excitement on the outside veterans today. Just kids running and playing tag and hugging each other and just laughing and that sort of. And then on the right, both the East Gloucester veteran staff on Monday, as part of opening day, went over to the new building to tour inside. They saw a lot of their spaces. Some folks stood in their offices and got photos. They look like this at this point, but people really got a sense of the place and how great it's going to be. So, just that folks are excited to see that. Here you go. Blue skies at Beeman. That's Beeman's new front exterior. And since you can't see it, I took this photo, it's not that close, but that's all new paint there, new pavement, also right on the sidewalk there and also around the entryway. On the left-hand side here, that white is new exterior. Paneling, replacing something that was board and bat and that was flaking and rotten. So, that's an improvement. And so, as I described to folks earlier in the summer, we painted and redid the front of Beeman and then we'll do the rest of it next summer. It's a matter of time getting someone on site. And then there's a shot of kids yesterday entering Beeman and playing and getting ready to go in in front of the new marches or the refurbished launchers.
Ben, can I just?
Yeah.
Point out that also Generous Gardeners created this new, that's a Generous Gardeners addition to the Beeman School.
Yeah, yeah.
They put in some like native plants, so to improve the vista there.
I noticed that and it looked new, but I was checking if I remember it or not. But it looks great. It's really great.
That was thanks to Generous.
Yeah. Thank you, Generous. West Parish today, so again, lots of smiles, kids on the rugs, wondering in this photo who's this guy just walked in the room with a tie. So, I explained that. She's been in her class the whole month, so she's been great. Anyway, then a couple of things. On the left, I was at GHS this morning and welcoming kids and that sort of thing. Mr. Cobb's did not take any photos, forgot to take photos except for the weight room. By the time we talked about taking photos, everyone was in class and the halls were quiet. But this is a new, a refurbished weight room. That's all new flooring. I believe it's new mirrors. And just waiting for the equipment. It's been ordered and it's going to arrive in three to four weeks. So, we'll have a brand-new, I believe refurbished fitness room, weight room at the high school and thanks to GMA, which is an association. And this is the Golden Board. I can't remember the teacher's class, unfortunately. But it was Susan, I believe, a first grade class. I really liked that message, the first grade, helping kids know from the very beginning that they are capable of many things, including those things that are hard. They can persevere and they can learn and they can work together to accomplish hard things and big things. And then, you know, O'Malley family, great opening with the Sex Raiders at O'Malley on the left there. Talking about energy outside of O'Malley yesterday, just a lot of kids waiting to go in. And then on the right, the lineup there of our distant principals and Officer Pizza Terra and of course Ace as well, ready to start the year. And then, it wasn't, truth be told, this wasn't after a long day. This is the first thing in the morning. As Officer Terra said, Ace hasn't been working with her over the summer. So, he's already tired out. Or he's just smart, he knows what to rest, so. Anyway, just a few photos, things I was able to see over the last couple of days to see the excitement of our school opening. So, any questions or comments, anything, anything to add? Amy or Katie, Brad?
I will tag on to what Laura said about Beeman and Generous Gardeners at O'Malley last week. It's very evident that that has been well cared for over there over the summer and it looks really very, I think, it looks as nice as it can possibly look.
Also, the Beeman Garden, I think it's tended to by a person over the summer. I'm not quite sure, actually, but...
It's tended to by a rotation of parents.
Okay, great.
And Haley, in her wisdom, always coming out too.
Yeah, yeah. But it looks, again, it looks like you're just taking great care of things and our girls and stuff. Anything to add, folks? We're going to jump right in then, hiring update. So, this is a summary of folks, of the people, the number of the folks we hired. So, hiring folks, accommodation of retirements, folks moving out of new positions, moving away, getting married, moving away, and things like that. But you can see it's organized by school and also by department. And also, we have some open positions as well. Doing pretty well in open positions, definitely some ESPs, not out of the ordinary at this point, but the difference is, at this point, we'd still be filling folks. It's hard, at this point, hard to find folks that fill these positions. So, it's not ideal, making do with a lot of creative staffing and just adjusting folks and then sort of moving some folks around in the last few weeks. But as you can see, you know, just a variety of staffing in terms of, and these aren't, these are not new positions. These are replacing existing positions. So, folks, like I said, moved away, maybe retired and sort of thing. And, yeah, just a little summary here. And you see just the office, but I, we shared with the staff was the changes in district office. I don't know if I got those to you, a listing of who's new and really, and also the staff roster there. I'll get that to school committee as well. So, that's just a quick update on the start of school. Oh, I also want to point out that it's got some really great swag. See, this is also from East Gloucester and Bets. Because the PTO is putting together and folks are nice enough to me that they give you presents, so. These are two nice ones. Um, all right, so I'm going to jump into our plan for ongoing improvement, okay? All right. So, as the committee knows and our staff knows as well, we've been working on this for a little while. And I'm just going to go through it. I'm going to give you, sort of, sort of, start off by where we are and then sort of how we got. If folks remember, not quite a year ago, I learned my entry plan report and that really detailed the conclusions that I had at that point by learning and listening to a lot of folks and looking at much data and other things and reports for where my perceptions were, my impressions were where we stood as a school community. At that point, just to remind folks, the primary conclusion is that we have a really strong foundation, create a culture of strong, positive, can-do folks, really built on compassion and trust and camaraderie. And then also, we were also very well positioned because of the work that our elementary schools have done for a number of years on curriculum instruction and really identifying good processes for understanding how students are doing. Real strength there and also strength at O'Malley and GHS because they had done the work over the last few years, really looked closely at how they were doing and what they needed to work on and had real clear path or plans and paths to do that. And to different degrees, have been working on those. At the same time, really had a sense that there's work to do. We continue to work on engaging students and connecting them more deeply to the school and also a sense of belonging and build that. You just improve academic achievement and then support our growing diversity of learners. That social education students, students with disabilities, that some are growing numbers of English language learners primarily and just the range of learners we have. You know, it's a great diversity like Gloucester. And then the other piece was that really sort of urgency to stay focused, not to try to do everything with the knowledge of sun. And that really led into some draft strategic priorities from my experience from a year ago. And at that point, identified sort of as initial priorities was continuing strength, continuing strength in instruction and deepen academic engagement, strengthen student social, emotional learning, mental health support, supporting most vulnerable learners to improve coordination services. And the thought, and then from those three, if we do those three things well, well, we'll improve some achievement. And of course, really important for us to communicate our successes across the school, across Gloucester. You all know that in those first three areas, we did quite a bit of work last year. Those are things we really focused on and sort of sucked through and made some great progress. I'll show you in a moment how these things in the Plan for Going Improvement really came through, really stuck as we did that work. There's a strong connection to these initial priorities. So, now, almost a year later, we have a full draft of the Plan for Going Improvement. And really, the why behind, I always like to start with the why. Why are we doing this? And really with a clear focus and easy-to-understand plan, we'll be able to do a few things. First of all, staff, families, community, school members, school community members will know what we're trying to do to change our school, very transparent about it, very explicit about it. Second of all, we'll be able to plan ahead to ensure that our staff and our leaders and our pools have the necessary resources, staff, training, support in order to accomplish our goals and really make progress in our priorities. Excellent budgeting, goal setting, that sort of thing. And then the last piece is that it'll allow us, having a clear focus plan, will allow us to stay focused and not go down lots of different paths, not sort of make ourselves just work and, you know, follow new approaches, new ideas, but really make consistent progress over time to completion of those things. Schools and districts unfortunately have a habit of keep on starting new things. They're really fully implement things quite well. Gloucester's done quite well on that, especially on our curriculum review and implementation at elementary schools. But it's always a risk in a school or district, they've tried to accomplish too much. So, a clear focus plan will help us stay away from that in order so we can improve student engagement, deepen student learning, and also improve academic achievement. So, in terms of developing the plan, a lot of work's been done on this by a lot of different folks, 150, more than 150 people have been involved in providing input. That's, we really just sort of, Katie, Greg Bach and myself and others went to each school and staff were invited to give input on that. We also met with the parent leaders group last fall and our community partners group as well. Each group provided input on those strategic priorities. I showed you those draft priorities based on what was most relevant for that school or that group, basically. So, the folks at elementary schools sort of looked at different priorities than the folks who in the high school, for example. So, building the plan, so that, all that input and all those ideas, four, together, four teams with a total of four staff members in the springtime, each one of them addressed a strategic priority. They started with the work we're already doing in our schools. This plan is not about starting lots of new things. It's about continuing, it's actually, in many ways, continuing what already started happening, but focusing it and make sure we work towards completion. And as I said, they used, they put from staff groups, they built, those four teams built out what you'll see as the future state of where we're headed, identified key initiatives and then also action items and really, you know, built three-year timeline in each priority area. And then the last piece, most recently, over the summer, really the four of us and then with input from the district leadership team, took all that work and really focused it, refined it, sort of made the language clear, did our best to do that. You folks are just going to judge whether we did a good job on that and then prepare the summary we're sharing tonight. So, we also looked at who would be doing the work. What's really important from across our district and across our schools is that, you know, not only timeline the work over multiple years, because all this work takes multiple years, but make sure no one group, school, grade level role is doing, you know, is too much to be put on them. So, we tend to look closely and because that had to adjust quite a bit of the work that folks were working on. Questions, yeah? So, the three components of the full plan, we're going to be focusing tonight on student belonging, learning, support, instruction. Then there's operations, you see these areas, finance, capital planning, resources, trans base, putter, and a T, those will come later. And then communication and community engagement. The Gloucester Education Foundation has been really, really helpful, convening a working group of communication professionals who also happen to be parents in the district and working with me to develop our community agreement with outreach plan. So, that'll also be coming out this fall. So, tonight, we're going to focus, as I said, on the primary, the most important reason of it, which is student belonging, learning, support, and instruction. So, these were the draft priorities last fall and they've really stayed pretty consistent. I'm going to show you with some pretty snazzy animation here. How they're, so he's took the first one there. Deepen student belonging, engagement in school. Here's where we really focus on strength in instruction to better connect general specifications. So, that really takes on that first priority, has been sort of adjusted to these two separate ones. The ones took supporting student mental health and social learning is exactly the way it was. We are still zeroing in on that, just like we identified a year ago. And then the other piece is just taken exactly from a year ago. Really need to strengthen our specifications through improved coordination services and specialized instruction. We've always been concerned about, are we over-identifying students, you know, for special needs? And really, through Katie's work and work with special education staff across the district, really looking at and identifying areas where we can better coordinate and make more coherent, more consistent our processes on that, as well as our instruction. But we'll talk more about that later. And then all those things, those things we do well in these areas will continue the path we're already on of deeper student learning and improve academic achievement. Just wanted to show folks how there's, like, we're not lurching from a year ago to this to this, but there's real connection between where we were a year ago and where we're now. So, now we're going to dig in and I'm going to show you, so I can give you a summary of the summary. I'll give you highlights of the summary that was in your packet, okay? And present to folks here. So, first priority, deepen student belonging and engagement in school, like I said. And we're going to share the future state we are working towards. Now, I want to say something about the future state because in a lot of places and across the district, the future states aren't here, okay? But it's about getting better at it, making sure it's consistent across the entire, all of our schools and sort of thing. So, I want to be clear that this doesn't mean we don't have these things. But this is what we're working towards. And really, sort of, it's in my way, I think of it as the, as the sort of North Star, as somewhere we're headed. So, in this area, really, that folks need to know and we need to continue to build and we really have this, I mean, this is something, of everything in this plan, this is the thing I think we're really nailing, but that we're a warm, friendly, welcoming community for all students and families, and that all is really important. That every student experiences a sense of belonging every day. Belonging is something we'll be thinking, you know, quite about. Folks heard we speak about it on opening day. But what we know more and more is that in order to learn, students need a sense of belonging. They need to know that they're welcome, that they're seen for who they are, their value for who they are, and that their basic human dignity is really honored, respected, and appreciated.
They're missed if they're not there.
Right, yeah.
And you and we miss.
Yeah, exactly. And it's a great saying, they're missed if they're not there. And that isn't something that kids need to do in order to belong. They just need to show up and they need to know that from us because from there, all the learning can happen. If they don't have that, then really it hinders many, many words. And then the last couple pieces here is that, but that not only children feel connected, but also families feel connected and appreciated and welcomed and their partners and next kids and child. So, again, these are, this is what we work, we, again, we have these in certain places now, but need to make sure they're consistent every day for every student. Is there a question?
Well, can you go back one?
Yeah.
Um, before I sort of read that last bullet, I was going to say a sense of belonging for not only students, but families, right? And I think like, I know you say that in that last bullet, but I think that sense of belonging is just a really nice way to summarize how we want everyone to feel in our schools, just as students.
Absolutely, 100%. And I mean, that's that as well.
Yeah.
I mean, really, you know, we're all part of, can be all part of our organization and that's something that we talked a little about with our new folks. You know, that the rest of us, it's our responsibility to make sure they know they belong, they're welcome, they're supported, that sort of thing. So, in terms of the goals in this area, so all our schools will deepen. So, we could do a lot of work in this area, okay? At many, many levels and many, many places, okay? But we're going to really zero in on a few places. So, all our schools will deepen our students and give them a sense of belonging, connection to our schools. We're going to reduce chronic absenteeism across all schools by supporting families early on. And we've worked on this a lot in the past, but we'll continue. We're going to really, you know, launch that and make new ways to know. But then, currently, all Gloucester High School students will explore a variety of pathways while in high school. They will choose their next step after graduation and be prepared for the next step. Because I think you've heard me say, high school, our Gloucester High, any high school, is about helping those kids take the next step and making sure that the next step is intentional. And be value of a whole range of steps for your colleges, to your colleges, the trades, the military, gap years. As we all know, in this room, in this community, you can build a really, a very... a very fulfilling life through many, many pathways. Um, but what we want our high school students to do is be conscious and be thoughtful about what's the next step they want to take. Whatever it is, and then we help them first identify. And then, it doesn't mean it's the commitment for the rest of their life, that's unrealistic, and, and it doesn't happen. But we do know that if they have an extent, as opposed to not having an extent, um, that's, that's an important piece. We'll look at that, look, look at that and look at, build that. So I'm just gonna show highlights, so to know this first goal, I won't put through all the goals in each one, I'm just gonna show you goal one and goal three here for priority one. In terms of deepening student belonging engagement in school, um, in our, in our uh elementary schools over the next three years. We're really focused on increasing the participation involvement of all families, especially and particularly those, rather to say, focusing on those families who are typically underrepresented at a school community events and activities. So really dig in, that's a new series of piloting efforts in the first year, learning from the pilot efforts, and then going deeper in the next couple of years. The other piece is uh at O'Malley and Gloucester High, really zeroing in and making a lot of effort, um, even further developing the student participation, leadership, decision making, how the school is run and how school happens. Um, we have a really great culture at the high school of student leadership. Lots of our clubs or athletics or arts, that sort of stuff. The question is, how can we get even a broader number of kids involved in that position of leadership roles? Um, and also involved in giving input, giving, you know, about how things happen here. Um, high school students can take on as much as we ask them to, as long as we support them. And so, um, really want to increase that in, in, in middle school students as well, so. They'll be working at the middle school, they're working in houses this year to pilot different ways to engage cases, we use the house. So then, um, I'm goal three here for a deepening student belonging and engagement. All GHS students will explore a variety of pathways, choose the next step after graduation. We've really, I actually covered this really for the most part, but the steps of it is first, we have to really develop the sort of culture and the message, implication around that as being a priority. That begins in, uh, when the eight, when the high school talks the eighth graders, you know, really sits at that point, talking about, about this process of really thinking and trying things out. So you're having a plan for the next step after graduation. Um, and then that's also a lot about strengthening our, our guidance, our council department. You know, and not only how they work with students, in being planful and prepared for the next step, but also the work they do. And then the last piece is, um, excuse me, um, one really, um, what's my word, valuable, enriching, important, essential pathway is through our curriculum vocational technology education programs. Um, and we talked about, um, we're gonna continue that work, obviously, we're definitely getting it rolling, that's deepening and strengthening the programs we already have. Particularly with, um, building partnerships in the community, with a new director on board, we can actually do that. Um, you know, before that was on top of the teachers and the regular movies, and then launching with the program, talked about this process. Again, um, that one isn't really new, but want to be very explicit about that, that's one of our goals. Alright, I can jump to number two here unless people have questions. And my companions are here to answer.
So this, um, just sort of a question, and this may not be where we're going with this, but so I, you know, I'm a huge, I, it, here you talk about the longing. Definitely as a parent, as someone who's in the schools a lot, um, it's really obvious how much that makes a kid want to go to school. Um, and I'm wondering, you know, and there are still social dynamics in schools where kids feel mocked and bullied and um, you know, that there's, you know, teasing and bullying and those kinds of things that are still happening. That's human, human nature. So I'm just wondering, it may, that may be too granular for this, but I'm just wondering how sort of that sense of belonging, that's part of that sense of belonging, is to sort of figure out how to.
So I think, I don't have the numbers down here, but priority, I appreciate priority.
Yeah.
Okay, it's very interconnected to social emotional learning, teaching kids skills, teaching um bullying prevention, compassion, empathy, diversity, you know, and I think all these priorities are very interconnected, so we, that's why we had a hard time, was that, is that your, you know, and I think, um, it's foundational, right? Belonging is, if that doesn't happen, nothing else happens, if connection doesn't work, nothing else happens.
So, right, and I thought of it when I was in three, when I was in three years. No, not, you know, when I was reading this at home, but then when you're talking about belonging and engagement, right? And attendance, and attendance, all of it, like, why, you know, you know much more than I do, but, you know, what are the granular reasons sometimes kids don't want to go to school or don't feel like they want to?
And you'll see when we get to part of three is, we'll look at it, you know, we have a lot of survey and data, you know, about how kids are doing in those schools, you know, in terms of cultural, cultural experiences, right? We haven't, um, really used that data that well yet, we have in pockets at times, but not in really sort of a regular, consistent manner. So that's one of the, because we have to know how things go, you know, not just sort of have a sense, right? Really know, uh, from them, you know? Um, and then there's, as, as we'll talk more about, is there's different, there's different layers, there's a what do you do every day in terms of helping kids learn the skills, right? And that's, that's not only how to treat people well and work well together, but also advocate yourself, right? So, um, and then what happens when kids need more support? Either because they're struggling or because, you know, they're, they're, you know, leading, you know, um, in, in, in the room, so. Yeah, but that's, that's.
I commend you first for having this very wonderful team approach. Because I know in the past, there's been clearly input, but to have people sitting here at the table that really can articulate the interconnected piece to all, how all this works, it just really, it's very powerful, um. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, it is a really good team, we should use them. Oh, yeah, no, it's a great team, the, the, the teacher girl, I mean, it's harder for folks to come after school and give input, you know, and it could turn out, and, you know, and, and um, and also, you know, especially on top of their, their regular jobs, but then also the teams, the spreading, those folks who, lots of meetings, led by Katie and Greg. Um, just really threw in, and then you'll keep going, because there's, um. Alright, so let me get back to, so thank you, very much. You'll know that we changed to not moving priority because the colors changed. We're gonna also, alright, priority two is strength in instruction, better connect general, especially. So instruction is really what matters, right? Um, every single day for every student. Um, and so the future state we are working towards is at all Gloucester schools, have an inclusive culture, which every student receives engaging, high quality instruction, supportive interventions, enriching every day, for every student every day. And then all students grow academically, socially, emotionally, developed from dependent to independent. So, um, a sense that is, it's the notion of gradual release responsibility. You know, as parents, you know, as educators, but, you know, there's a lot of support when you're younger, less and less support as you grow older, and still is always support, right? You're always teaching, you're always supporting, you're always guiding. But, uh, we really want kids to have, you know, leave, um, and, and develop that from, uh, uh, your grade level to grade level. Um, as they move on, to fulfill our mission of lifelong. So the goals, so four goals in this area. Um, so I can see here what curriculum instruction to deepen learning for all students, that's where you see Witten, uh, uh, Witten Wisdom work that we've been doing, that Greg's been leading with the coaches and all our elementary teachers. Um, also see that, that work in, uh, the work we're doing with O'Malley, uh, just recently, and the ongoing work at GHS. Strength and inclusive practices through improved clarity of what best practices are, more effective professional development, easier access and structured resources. You'll see this goal also reinforced in search education, and the idea is that, um, your general education and search education are, are interwoven with all of our kids, all of our students. You don't compartmentalize, you know, civil education students here, special education students here, no, that's actually not, not the best approach for, um, for, for the kids' learning, uh, so all kids learn. And so how do we develop work as a practices? And so you see more flexible approaches, flexible groupings of students. Students may do more of, you know, in, in, in the classroom learning in small groups, um, and then as well outside the classroom. But how do we get really clear on the best approach to that, to be clear about it? Um, really important work on making sure all students with disabilities and, uh, when those learners receive central tier one instruction every day. And then, um, educating families on how our schools use, also through the instruction to serve all students. So what we do in our schools is pretty complicated, right? And so it really behooves us to make sure our families understand our approach, so they have, um, so they know how and why when we're with disability or with burners or their own children. So a hot couple highlights here, we'll look at goal one, and I think goal three. Um, so this is about striking tier one curriculum instructions, so again, tier one instruction is what every child gets every day. Um, they get counted on in their, in their classroom, so, uh, I mentioned, I don't have it here, but this is where we really look at the, um, include the Witten Wisdom work uh, English Language Arts in elementary. But most importantly, starting, uh, when we started last year, we reviewed the O'Malley six day curriculum, and piloted and adopted a curriculum for English Language Arts, Math, and Health. Started English Language Arts, as you know, last year, uh, we'll get the math going this year, and then also work really with good help. Health, we're looking at, um, one, it, it's this great place to look at so much of the social emotional learning and develop those skills and, and develop and teach those skills. Look at, um, really important health issues that, that those schools are dealing with and they concern about the first time. But also because, um, we've added some additional staff in O'Malley, there's more, there's more health curriculum, more health classes, that's what we're chasing, now integrated into the houses. So I really gotta look at that, because it's a great, a great opportunity. Um, continue the work that the program leaders and, um, a chief of the leading over the last few years on strength and tier one instruction at Gloucester High. And that's really using brain-based cultural response practices, so that brain base is, you know, how the brain actually develops and learns. The cultural responsive practices are really about, you know, what we talked about before, it's belonging. How do students know that, um, that where they come from, what language they speak, the histories and stories that they bring are being reflected in, uh, the classroom and in what they're learning or their reading. And then, um, a couple of the parts of this, one, our, uh, new teacher academy is really strong, especially K through five in elementary, and then really gonna extend that to, uh, all, you know, through all grades, basically. Uh, that's where it's gonna, Greg has been leading with others for a number of years now. Um, and then the other piece, and this is really much newer, you, to my knowledge, we've never had a really coherent and consistent, um, uh, program for work-related professionals and developing their skills. And so that's gonna be really, um, uh, very sort of, we'll develop that. And so we'll have a, an academy during the summertime, but also during our professional development or release days, uh, make sure that they're getting support and training that's relevant to their specific role. Which they did in the summer last year, I think, um, it was very positive, and we're gonna do more, and that'll be focusing on inclusive practices, like I mentioned before. And then just looking at, at, you know, highlights, highlights of goal three, um, again, this is, this is really, um, this first one about master schedules is a little sort of in the weeds. But when you have so many different, um, students at any given school, they have a lot of different needs, they need all the services, so they need speech and language services, they need um, support on literacy or math, they need, they need, they need support. Make scheduling that so it all happens, and they're not being pulled out of their classes, especially their key academic classes again and again, is, is really, really challenging. So, um, we have a sense we can do it better, um, both teachers have asked to do it better, and the principal as well. So begin that this year, really look deeply into that, see what we can, what we can do to sort of, uh, make that puzzle work better. Then also a really important piece in the next three years, really zero in on English Language Education curriculum. This first year, there's tier focused monitoring, which is a process that the state comes in, uh, in, in all schools and districts on a regular basis, every, those six years, they, they do a visit at this point. Uh, next year, we'll, uh, do a little curriculum review of bringing this language education and instruction, and then begin a pilot to follow on or two. So again, trying to timeline things out, so not trying to, you know, urgency, not trying to do too much in. Color change means we're on a different priority, any, any, uh, any questions on this?
Could you just say a little bit more about the health changes at middle school? You said something about, is there, just for clarification, is there a health teacher for every single house now?
I don't know the answer to that question, I, 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 yeah, there is, there are more health teachers, I'm not sure exactly how to organize, okay? I'm sure there's one per house, but in terms of health and P, that there's more of that happening? You want to talk about some of the recruitment changes that we're just hoping to?
Um, so I don't know the exact number either, but I do know there's more time and there will be more curriculum development, um, more curriculum review, and more, um, consideration on where the parents, what our kids need to know, um, and then how do we supplement that in the increased time? So, um, and that kind of goes to probably goal three, um, where we talk a little bit about supplemental, um, tier one SCL around substance abuse prevention, bullying prevention, digital literacy, you know, cyber safety, and those things. And so I'll be working with, um, the health teachers district wide to look at that curriculum.
And we'll find out just exactly the structure of health.
Yeah, and that feeds into kind of, I'm giving us an overview of some of the schedule, the scheduling benefits, right, which we talked about as part of the process, depending, which state we see how it's.
Well, yeah, 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 sure, yeah, great.
Can I just, oh, one? Sure, just, um, because I, I really don't know, like, what, um, you mentioned some things, Amy, but what kind of things are in a middle school health curriculum? Like, what, is it, I mean, is cyber safety part of that, or is it something separate, or like what?
So I'm not as familiar, to be honest, and that's gonna be start the process, but like, for instance, they use a substance abuse prevention, um, evidence-based program called Life Skills that five years ago, the health department, health fund, um, so how is that being used, is it being used with validity? Um, is it effective? All those things we're gonna start to look at. Um, so I don't have, um, the exact answer, but hopefully, when we start working on this plan, all that, all that information will become more clear.
One thing that we will, oh, I did it right now, actually, part three, is, um, uh, there hasn't really been any coherent, consistent curriculum in health, uh, you know, in, in, across the district. Uh, there has been social emotional learning and skill development curriculum that's been used in elementary. Um, but it's changed over the years and, and, and it was used less and, and, you know, less here, less in some places, more in other places. And definitely one of the things we heard, uh, in terms of going to each school, was wanting to get back to something where they, you know, folks know what the curriculum is. And then we're actually looking at what we have now, seeing what, what we really need, because it's, in some ways, added data, especially for like, the curriculum we're using is more added date for, um, sort of, you know, four through eight. Um, whereas K one, two, three, three, K one, two is still actually, you know, quite, quite appropriate, so, um. So that's one of the, you know, primary reasons is there is this, this possibility of really using it, um, uh, more effectively. The first place where we look at is, is the sort of the tier one instruction, one of the, you know, the basic curriculum, basic concepts and, 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 um, that we want to cover, uh, topic to cover um, in terms of, you know, using a curriculum, uh, one thing where maybe is that, what's the trails, trails, it's called trails, um, that's the name of it. But that's, um, sort of social emotional, uh, social emotional learning skills, am I saying that right? Um, but that may not have, you know, that's not a complete, and so there are different topics we might want to supplement, depending on the, the, the age. And those will be different, sort of third, fourth grade, they would be sixth, seventh, seventh, seventh grade, so that's, so. But, um, definitely things like substance abuse is a concern, obviously, there's also, you know, um, sort of cyber awareness in those pieces. Um, and a few others that may not be included in trails, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I'm eager to, I'm eager to hear as you go through the review, like, what, like, fine.
Just to sort of, piggyback on that, right, like, as we sort of think about our core values as a district, and we sort of think about how we move forward with health and social emotional learning, my hope is that we continue just sort of, um, work towards those, both of those things together, right? And culturally, we sort of think that mental health is your separate, that health, right? And so it's a core value of our district, I really hope that, like, our health curriculum is very much intertwined with mental health support, right? Um, and I, so just as we sort of think about health curriculum, that, that's really a goal.
Excellent.
Definitely.
One piece of that, one, which I'll just, uh, exemplifies, or the example of that connection is that we will be restarting the health moles committee, and, uh, Amy Camp and Jack Parker will be what we, the unions. So, you know, it's very direct, um, sort of approach that connects, you know, as well as that, so. Hold on. Alright, any questions here, we'll be direct to Cam. Um, so priority, social emotional learning and health support, so, uh, you know, for, I think our whole society rise is more important than ever. And really what I mean by that is like, we're more, we understand. And really what I mean by that is like we're more, we understand more that's important. It's always been important. Uh, we may not value as much. So um, really want to uh do a much better job working with families and community partners to support student mental health wellness. And uh, then also, you know, our commitment is ensure that every student learns and social emotional skills, necessarily thrive in school and beyond. Um, and these are, we talk about being lifelong mirrors and these are lifelong, lifelong skills. How you communicate, how you collaborate, how you respond to challenge, um, how you treat people. Knowledge about, you know, risks and safety. Those are things that we carry with us. And keep on making good decisions well after we're in this level of school. So then the goals within that, um, social emotional learning, skill development, talked about that, but just really uh, like we've talked about multi-tier system instruction. Not only in academics, but also in supporting social emotional learning, mental health. Um, you know, what, what's instruction that folks, your kids get, what air, what years, what, you know, what areas? Really um, have a real plan for that. Now, I was gonna start by assessing what we're doing and then also piloting, then assessing the pilots and, you know, continuing that process. Um, and then there's other, other pieces here, which is um, being more systematic about how we're identifying, you know, students and what their needs are. Uh, we require additional or charge support. And really, um, we need to talk more about just some uh, sort of, you know, tool, some tools we can use. So really, and really started using last year, and we're just sort of continuing this work. And then continue strengthening the expertise and skills of all school-based clinical staff. You heard, I think with January, Amy's presentation, how she started that last year. And I think for the first time, a real uh focused, coherent uh effort over time to bring our clinical staff, you know, across, from cross-issue together. Regular consults, regular problem solving and also regular training. So we're gonna continue that. And then the last piece is uh, we also know that we're a school system. And we, we are, we cannot be the mental health provider. For all families and all students, just that isn't our, it's an important piece of our work. And we always have a response for our kids, but there's gonna be times where we can't, um, we don't have those services, a lot, a lot of times. So with Amy's leadership, really, how do we develop community partnerships? So when kids are in crisis or needed that support. We already have established programs or partnerships that we can uh work with folks. And to make sure that our students and their families get the support they need that we just aren't, aren't equipped or won't be equipped to provide. So those are the four goals in, in training social emotional learning and mental health support. We're looking at a couple of them. Um, developing a multi-tier system of construction. So we talked about this, was just assess first of all, the school culture and climate, you know. Begin to really get a handle. We have a sense in many ways, we've looked at it over the years. For how student belonging is happening and, and, and school connection. But also what's uh their sense about learning environment, how, how it's going, really like look deeply at that. Uh, mentioned developing, piloting tier one social emotional learning curriculum, that's, that's trails curriculum we mentioned before. Um, and then also providing tier two social emotional and mental health support for identified students. Can you give a couple of examples of?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, so tier one, right, is for everyone. And then there's some kids that need reinforcement or more intensive support. And so trails actually, and the reason we selected, you know, trails for pilots is because it has that component. It has um seven week curriculums for skill based learning. Um, it teaches, um, it's like a, it's based on CBT and mindfulness. And it is um very focused and it, and it is geared towards um elementary, middle and high school. Um, last year I got a grant through D E S I. Uh, it was around eighty seven thousand. We have it again this year. I've been applied. And we contracted with children's friends and they have a mental health initiative come into the high school and run those groups. Uh, but it's tied to um, goal, another goal, which is the systematic, you know, identifying kids early. So we did universal screenings. So we didn't just identify kids randomly. We did anxiety scales. Um, and in combination with substance abuse scales, because we felt that kids needed that um education. On when they maybe have a substance abuse or are using, that they need to see the connection sometimes with um the anxiety or different symptoms. So we did the screening um at the high school. And they, we, when, when the kids have an elevated score, we met with them, we had a response plan and we offered them services.
Can I just ask you something?
Go ahead.
So there's self, you're giving them a scale and they?
Yep, it's a seven. The GAD seven is um a global anxiety um scale. And it um has seven questions.
Would, would it be okay for us to see this out like?
Absolutely, yeah. Oh, right now? No, no, okay.
I'd be interested to see what the seven marks.
Do you have anything available for O'Malley kids?
Yeah, so we're, so in the, in the plan, we, um, so my goal really would be, well, our goal, sorry. But our, our goal is to um have um. Kind of this systematic way to check in with kids K through P, you know, K through twelve. And so there's an emotional check-in um way that um on the computer that uh can be done in classrooms. Where kids can identify whether they would like to speak to someone or the teacher can look at like the landscape of the class that day. Um, where are kids' energy level, are kids struggling and they can adjust um what they're doing that day. So that's the elementary kind of level. And then the um middle school, we're hoping to do, expand the screenings there. At the high school, we're hoping to include the PHQ nine, which is a depression scale.
I ask because I think this, this year, I think this is the first year, or maybe it was implemented last year, they have that anxiety lab or something at O'Malley.
Um, it's at the SCL room?
Um, Lynn was talking about it when she was here before us. It allows students to read. Class based on their anxiety and then they go down and they're able to get some sort of support.
Yes.
For what they need. I don't know the exact.
Yeah, so it's um, it's um consistent with what we're um doing district wide in terms of. What is the skill that we need to teach this student right now? So they don't just like leave the room and sit and miss, right? Like we're doing um, some, like really targeted support. Just in much, in well, to learn the skill that's in tolerating stress.
I have another call.
Okay, good. Um. As you're sort of doing universal screening, have you considered? In the middle school and high school, expanding that to a universal trauma screening?
Yeah. So I um, we can talk about that. I um, I would, I, so. So the Aces or similar screen, I um, I'm very hesitant to ask kids about trauma as well, yeah.
Ask kids about what?
Trauma in a, in a way that's um a universal screening. Like, so this is the piece, is I chose the GAD, the anxiety, because we had to make sure we could respond. Quickly, with a plan, with services and support. Uh, that's why I didn't do the depression yet, because we need to have that same level. And if we ask kids about trauma. Um, I don't really, um, I think. I don't really, um, I don't think so. But I mean, I, some schools do it.
Also just, there's also just limits, you know, how many different pieces we can do. Uh, how many people, how many ways students can top over tolerate. So we really do have to select. This is like even this, you know, this is another combination. So it is, I mean, as you can tell, I mean, I hope you can tell, Amy's trying to be very thoughtful about what we, which ones we do. And also making sure, as you said very clearly, like, make sure if we do something, what we've learned, we have to get capacity to respond. Because not responding is stupid information. It's, it's really got me in trouble.
So we got this, I'm just gonna say this because I'm really proud of our district. We got this fair. I, I partnered with children's friends. To provide substance abuse services. It's called ACR, um, Analyst and Community Reinforcement Approach. Um, and um, uh, this TV, this CD, this trails tier two. Um, and project adventure for the EL students who maybe wouldn't endorse um a positive mental health screen. So we wanted to offer um something and we had a viable adventure, these counselors come in. So we um had those supports when we had the kids stream with elevated scores. We had substance abuse support, we had um anxiety, um. Like skill development support and we had project adventure. So other schools, I was on the calls and they didn't. They were just reading people and we didn't have any services for the students. So um we have to, I think, just be really ethical.
And, and I assume that doesn't mean. People, administrators, teachers are not doing things if they, if they have a concern for, right? So it's not like, it doesn't really play, you're just not getting a universal.
Well, and we have to be really careful about opening up trauma during the school.
Yeah. So just to clarify.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, when I am thinking about universal trauma screening. Because this can be from K all the way through twelve. There are places that do blind um trauma screening that parents fill out. So it doesn't, is there's no identifying information. But it gives us sort of a baseline of like what's happening in our schools, right? So like how many kids are dealing with um substance abuse? How many kids and the parents, there's no real um consequence on their end because there's no identity.
So it's aggregate data to help guide.
Yes. Um, so just, yeah, so that's sort of what I mean by universal, because of course you're not gonna ask a kid about trauma at school, right?
People do.
Yes. I agree, that's not ethical, but just for us to get a baseline in our, you know, in our district, like what are we dealing with? Right? Because if we're noticing that at the high school, we have really high numbers of um. Yeah, let's just say.
So we do, we still do the every other year.
We still do the other, every other year questionnaire, yes, right? We do the wireless every other year.
The wireless could, could, you know, I, I don't know the screen you're talking about, you know, but it could uh serve a similar purpose.
Yeah.
To give us a sort of aggregate data about like what's, what's the landscape, what you're gonna say, right? Because of landscape, what we're doing, this must, yeah.
Anyway, just something to sort of consider, just especially at a younger level for us to sort of get a real good sense of like, what are kids dealing with? What are parents dealing with? Um, and then with, with that data, be able to use that to advocate for like goal number four, right? Community partnerships. This is what we're dealing with in our schools. We really need more punishments.
Just gonna make a comment, I guess, when it comes to trauma. I've done a lot of research and. I've actually taken the ACE test. I'm an eight on the ACE test, which is pretty impressive. And also very cautious and serious, being, really being very careful about opening that up. In the schools, if you don't have the resources to support kids. When they say, oh, by the way, this is happening at home. It's a, it's a slippery slope for kids. It's nice, you know, we can put nice words around it and say, oh, we get all these programs. But there's a big difference between that and a kid coming to you and saying, oh, by the way, this is happening to me at home and. You better have some answers for them, because if not, it's, it's a very scary thing. So I'm just. Uh, I appreciate the talk about trauma and all that kind of stuff, but. It can be a very dangerous thing to open up, especially for kids. And if it wasn't for a few people in my life, like. That I was comfortable and confident enough to say, hey, here's some of the things that have gone on in my world as a young teenager, then. I'm not so sure it would turn out as well as it did, so. So that's just my two cents worth, I just.
I think it goes back, um, just earlier we were talking about belonging, make sure that kids, all kids have a real sense of belonging and connect. Part of that, and we're talking sort of the, the larger pieces, the more blunt pieces of these assessments. But ultimately, it's just what you said, Bill, which is. Do our students have a close enough connection to folks? So when they need to, or if they at that moment have to. There's someone to turn to and say, hey, I need some help while going through this. That's ultimately where, where we wanna be. These tools help us, some of those tools help us a part of that, but that belonging and connection that, um, that, um, that, that, um. You know, making folks aware that humans deal with this stuff.
Yeah.
You know, is, it's where, you know, um, ultimately we need to be, you know, because that, that's where. And, and, and that happens in our schools and kids do come from a trust as well. And you know, I, I'm very confident, you know, how we respond, we're able to respond. And that's because. The fellow, this community knows trauma very well, okay? I, I say, I say that in all seriousness, you know, it's, it's experience line. But that means that there are a lot of agencies, partners, people who know their work and connects and support them, so, right? But I, I hundred percent, you know, really treating that, you know, and I mean, with respect, kind, careness. Um, because it's, it's very difficult for folks, you know, yeah.
So I'm about halfway through becoming a certified presenter for ACE and uh. It's a lot of work. Um, but at some point I'd like to have an offline discussion with you about.
I would.
Small topic related to this is, um, especially at the elementary schools, there's not always consistent. Programming around some of this stuff. And I know, I'm, I'm assuming and I see in here, the goal is to sort of make things more consistent. You know, well, I guess we're gonna be, well, for elementary schools soon. Um, um, so, you know, this is more a topic, because I know you, you're all aware of this, but I, I, my hope would be. That in schools that, um, you know, I guess my question is. If there is not someone to sort of take on these roles in one school versus another school, how do you, how do you handle that? Or will you, or will you be making sure that there will be someone who can monitor and administer these programs in every school consistent?
So um, my vision would be that one day, as a parent, you could um open up. Your computer and see what kind of skill um social emotional learning your child is doing and it'd be consistent across the district. And so we're working on that. I think, uh, I think people are doing a great job. Um, going into classrooms, teaching these skills, but um one school is looking different than another school and um. We wanna make it, make sure that it's evidence based, it's comprehensive and it's developmental, it's culturally response, you know, culturally sensitive. And it follows a, a, um, a clear path from kindergarten to twelfth grade.
Some of these things have been more dependent on like who's in the PTO than, you know, and not yet. So I'm saying it's not just, you know, the PC, you know, it's not. Necessarily the staff, but just to sort of move towards a more consistent.
Yes.
For all these programs, I think would be, well.
That's, before you even asked the question, I was gonna give kudos to Amy for the work that she's already started doing. It's embedded in the plan and the details around building that consistency and providing leadership teams. And clinical staff with the training on when things do come up that we can best hardly respond to. In schools that she's teaching and training everyone on who to connect to. Um, developing consistent forms and processes on if this happens, here's how we're going to respond as a district. So the work, she's already started it and you know how, how she is, but.
I do.
Um, it's, it's definitely, it's already underway and started.
Thank you.
And, and I want to say my consistency, some like consistency in any type of organization is looked down on. The reason for consistency and coherence across multiple schools is so every single child has the same access to those supports. That's the reason to do it.
Right.
You know, otherwise, otherwise in schools, it's all time, they do, you're depending on individuals to be either heroic. You know, or um based on their own approach, which may vary, you know, um, very wild, wild. That's not only here, that's lots of places, right? So, so that's the reason for consistency and coherence is so every single child has that access. And that's what's most important.
Absolutely. And that's, it hasn't always been the case.
Right.
All right, um, let's go on to. Oh, just one last piece here, a couple, a couple last pieces, because this one's quite important is um. And this ties to the student agency, um, and student ownership that we talked about earlier. So the last one here is increase mental health literacy for all students through a peer education model. So we already have a few things in place in this, but we'll add another one this, this year to the interdepartmental meeting. But just, anyway, the mental health masters, you know about them, um, in others. But how do we get students involved in sort of leading the charge on educating their, their peers? Not only their peers, but also high school students, educating O'Malley students, you know, on big boards of mental health, mental health literacy. So that really combines a few things to talk about. And then um, we just also mentioned this, but this is the work that really. Again, uh, folks got a really good understanding of what ages were made of the past year. And this is to make sure our critical staff has the expertise and the sort of collaboration um to make sure. To make sure that it's a consistent process across the, across the district. So, moving on. Strengthening specialization to improve coordination services, specialized instruction, so. This is the vision that Katie shared with all of you when she gave you sort of a follow-up date, um, hasn't changed, changed, right?
Give me a word or two, but it's still.
But ultimately, what what's getting at is that, um, you know, clear processes and consistent processes allow us to. Identify the necessary supports or interventions or certain type of instruction that sets students need, they qualify for IPs. That requires, you know, good systems, clear systems, consistent systems, um, that are not only using best practice, but also aligned very importantly. With your state and federal um regulations and laws. Then and then from there, uh, make sure we have inclusive educational environments, because we want students to learn in the least restricted. To act best for students to learn in the least restricted environment that suits them. So less cordoning off of groups of kids, okay? And we're as much as possible of kids included in in general classroom. So it'd be work to do that. Um, and then, um, then they might want to add anything to the, this is sort of the summary.
I think, um, it just was really, was nice to kind of be able to loop back to this vision. After, you know, this was what guided all of our work with strengthening of special education, the team, we were really focused on this and looking at this. I feel like plan nearly captures what we need to do to get to to this future state.
Great, so thank, let's take, so three really clear goals, strengthen evaluation and element processes. Anything about individual education program development, so the process around doing that, to make sure those are accurate and appropriate, um, if you follow through. Uh, and then strengthen our specialized instruction practicing consultation, so the evaluation of students or whether they need um specialized instruction. Um, the actually uh development of the documentation and um and identification of services that we'll actually provide. And then making sure we're we're in a position to um to provide those um cross-maintain programs and also. As it go on, um, would develop consistent and high-function practices for processes, special education referrals, contemporary evaluations, and community accountability. So again, as we talked about, sort of review what we're currently doing, that really started last year with Kay's leadership. Create a real clear staff resource manual on referrals, evaluation, and that accountability. Because these are very um sort of granular processes, um, they can, they can, it's it's harder folks to understand them fully. Follow them appropriately, um, and so having really clear guidance to support the necessary. So we need to do a better job on making sure folks know what's expected of them, not only by, really, by um. Sort of state law and federal law, because these processes are made into by by those laws. And then the last piece is provide targeted personal development on how to do these evaluations properly. Um, and then it has a goal three, so this is about strengthening our specialized instruction, instructional practices. So looking closely at our various programs, so um, I've got district-wide programs. And autism or development delay programs and looking at those closely, see how we're doing with that, um, our therapy program as well. Specialized reading curriculum instruction, this is an area in particular where uh by training a number of folks, we can have, make sure that. The important piece of reading is happening not only in plot situations, but also within the classroom as well, by pushing the staff in the classroom. Um, and then also strengthen our practice. So the the, this seems like a lot, but there are different folks would be doing these different pieces. Because you don't have staff, you have staff where it's sort of program-based. So if you're working on the district-wide autism program, you're working with, you know, specific staff, but if you're working on the specialized reading curriculum. Uh, it may be different staff, okay? So there's lots of pieces in here, but it's it's um, it's sort of more limited or focused on specific people.
Think, just to add to that, um, one of the key focuses of the school is really to build our capacity to be able to support students in their neighborhood schools. So that they don't need to get necessarily from one school to another, because the program only exists there. When we think of specialized reading instruction um and curriculum, if we train people to be able to deliver that in all of our schools. They don't need to go to a different school to to receive that instruction. So that's really a focus of this as well, it's really being able to support students in their neighborhood schools where they have grown up and know that they're.
I'm ready to go on next step, tell you where we go from here.
I I realize that this is embedded in probably everything that's due um in special education, but I was just looking at goal two. Letter B, so provide staff resources and training for progress monitoring, full writing, and IEP development. I'm wondering if you would be supportive of adding in like how to communicate with parents around C I E P process.
That is, that is in the details of the goal. The goal is very much around, that's like a very basic. The goal is very much around how do we ensure that our I E Ps are student-centered focused and that parents can have the meetings. And understand what their child's strengths are, what their weaknesses are, what the disability area is, and how we're going to support and get them to that. Um, and really making sure that our staff are trained and learn how to explain. Disabilities and needs and what that instruction is in a in parent-friendly language. So that they have a strong understanding of, oh, okay, and here's, here's some things you could do at home too. But really, what we have work to do is getting a C pack up and running, we're still working on that, um, part of that is the education to parents as well. But the the details of the plan really outline kind of year one, what the focus is on the training for that and year two.
And again, this may be embedded in this, um, but. So I know this is a plan for the entire district, and I know on the program subcommittee and working with the committee, like one. Do a focus of our attention right now is O'Malley, um, and the work that needs to be done there. That maybe doesn't need to be pulled out in any special way, because obviously these, you know, the curriculum work that was done in the elementary schools you referenced. You know, and I know the high school and middle school are both looking at that and then working to, you know, to sort of um. Uh, incorporate, you know, what's appropriate at each of those levels. I'm, I guess my question is, is there any reason to sort of give special attention in this document? To the work that needs to be done at O'Malley, or is it best to sort of keep it, you know, with all of our levels? Knowing that we, we are focused, you know?
Um, I haven't thought about that, I don't think, I don't think we've really thought about that, so it's, you know, so thank you first of all, but let's think through some more of that. You know, help with what the folks have to say as well, um, uh, you know, tied to the plan for improvement. The school improvement plans will come, you know, will be, will be tied to it, you know? Um, and certainly O'Malley has a, you know, detailed plan about the different pieces they're working on, you know, so those things don't go away. But they should be, and I believe they really are, you know, closely tied since here, right? So, but whether whether in the plan itself to to call, to to really. You know, communicate specifically clearly about working, you know, mainly, um, let's consider that.
It's a question, I don't, I don't know, but it's just a focus of the question.
That could be about messaging as well, as opposed to necessarily written, you know, written the plan, you know, just in terms of. But I do think that um, certainly messaging, communicating, you know, internally and externally about. Need to, for merely to do some really more work on, just like we've been doing at elementary, you know, and that happened in high school. That works beginning and underway, um, and also really make sure we can maybe hear the progress that we're making, you know, so.
So this might be too big of a question, might be sort of like a separate presentation, but. How will we know that we're improving academic success, right? Like what benchmarks are we using, what data are we using, how can we sort of?
Can I answer that by segwaying to the, to the next, uh, to the next steps here? And you, you are correct, that that'll be, that'll be different presentation at different time. Let me just, okay, let me just tell you how we're gonna get there. Next step, so on the, on the part we're talking about tonight, student long and learning support instruction, so input discussion in the school committee. Happy to have that in another meeting and program, wherever you folks want to do it, okay? Recommit, or we can be our planning teams, um, so they can review this in depth. Further review with our leadership team as well this month, and then we'll reconvene our partners and parent groups. Um, and really that's about refining the language, finalizing the format, really being back on things, I think, clear and concrete, and understandable, what sort of thing. Um, don't expect wholesale revisions and stuff, but you know, some refinement definitely, and then as you know, adoption schedule for for nine twenty. There are other pieces though, um, to talk earlier to operations, so uh, these plans are sort of underway, worked on in the spring and it sort of just happened. I I haven't been able to work with folks since then on it, but um, but we'll uh, really um. Uh, continue to do that in these three areas. You've seen some of the work on here, um, some of the thinking and transportation, you've seen some of the capital definitely, you know. Our capital planning is really, as you saw through your plan, so um, that'll be finalized in in October. And then communications and engagement, um, complete a series, we're going to complete a series of meetings, working group that GF and this can be. And then develop an outreach engagement plan with their new coordinator. So based on the work of the working group, so, um, but really, you know, the first and foremost is to get this, this, the, you know, the area where the works. We're talking about tonight nailed down, um, we're doing the work essentially, um, but really want to make sure that folks know that is, you know, it's the plan. They're going forward, completing the plan, um, share the full draft, so, so what you have right now, what we presented and also shared with staff. Is the, is the summary, so just, you know, that, not the details of it, we'll share, share that with you and staff by the end of the week, so we need some work, just some. A few, you know, once-overs on it, um, you'll see those, um, and folks may want to dig deeper into that and you may not. You know, but we're, we're having a different levels, and then then beneath all that is an individual work plans, um, you know, that that are, you know, are. School leaders or coordinators, directors are really managed basically. But finalize each component of the plan in September, October, as I just said, and then the piece, just to answer your question, Sam, is, is. We we will identify through the course this year, you know, what the progress benchmarks will and there is discussed successfully, you know? So that's, that's work, this last, it has to happen, but really can happen once we have the plan set, you know? And also, you know, that's something, those are pieces that aren't always obvious in education, you know, in this type of work, right? So it's gonna take some work to understand, you know, how do we assess it, can we assess it, but in terms of, you know, uh, success. We can certainly create, you know, progress benchmarks, we'll have those, you know, those are more obvious to do, right? But the measurement successes are not always clear or easy, so this will take a part of the work. Um, and then using our plan, um, the plan is meant to to guide us and drive our work, so we're facing our annual budget process, you know? We had some barriers in the past, but really based on the plan, okay? Um, based on hiring staffing, um, on the plan priorities. And then uh, school improvement plan will be tied to the uh, plan for improvement, and then our goals, my goals. The directors, the coordinators, principals, assistant principals, their annual goal will be tied to, will be tied to, um, you know, um, making progress. On all borders of that basically, so, um, really need to, uh, that's the way you make a plan, sort of, you know, living. It's not just have it on a shelf, but actually be using it in all your regular processes, so. That's it for the sort of launch of the plan into existence. Any questions or comments or concerns?
Thank you.
I think these two can go home, sorry Greg. All right, uh, next is O'Malley Windows, your doors. So I'm gonna talk about the O'Malley Windows and Doors, got some good news just in the morning. So, uh, the MSBA uh board director met this morning, and we slideshow this. You'll see that they uh consider seven projects for the funding and repair program. They approved ours unanimously, so we are, they are now in partnership with us. Uh, as we shared with you last week, I think it was, that um, they're in with us for a facility grant of three point five billion dollars. That could be three point seven, depending on how contingency is used. You'll also notice that it's the largest project by a fair bit, in terms of what they're approved today, not only the large, large project, but also the largest reimbursement. So, uh, it's a big project, but they are fully supported, it's great. Uh, from the next step on this, so there's some basics, um, numbers here, you know the numbers, that's three point seven million dollars for uh reimbursement. If we use all contingency, um, they approved the uh PF, they approved the product funding agreement today. We have thirty days for the mayor, myself, and Ken, school, school chair to sign that. That thirty days starts when we get the, we receive it, we expect to receive some rest of the team. So, um, off the community side, you want to address that first at B and F, we come to the board committee. Um, you have a draft of PFA in your packet, but it's very long, so we give you ahead of time, you get sort of a sense of what it is. It's pretty pro forma, but you need to get going, there are a few different things, so make sure we get really two important dates. The, approximately October fifteenth for the PFA, um, project funding agreement, sorry, and then, um, for the administration to. Identify funding for total project, six point nine, six point five million dollars, and then ninety days, so that's approximately November thirtieth as well. So you have those, the date, how, how can we like to proceed in terms of the PFA, or or questions, yeah?
So I have a question to Greg, um, your experience as a city councilor, also entirely as a mayor. But what processes does this have to go through at the city council level? Does the city B and F have to review this?
This is gonna have, we're gonna have to bomb the whole amount, this will be reimbursed, so, um, so first of all, that's if we, if we.
If you choose.
But we're going to, I had a chat with John Dunn before about the office today, so we're committed to it, uh, my offices. Um, so we're, we've identified, we had a meeting, uh, we just, we talked about it, so this is a possible, um, ARPA candidate. So, uh, but it'd be great if chats with members of B and F on the council and the rest of the councils. Um, because if it goes through there, we don't want any surprises.
Right, that's why I was asking, because you were asking to go to ARPA, you know, we don't meet until the twenty first, I think it is. And I just don't want to add time to the process. And maybe it's a joint meeting of both B and Fs, I don't know, we could try something like that too.
Right, but in the end, so this, this is a pretty solid date here, that they do by November thirtieth, that's the council making their final vote.
Yeah, that's for the, for the, you know, for the funding. I I don't know, the PFA has to go through the.
No, I don't.
I don't think the PFA, right, that's.
From what you just mentioned, myself, you. Is that John, I assume, not, not Gary?
That would be John, John, yes, John.
So I put the action on this um agenda, so that we procedurally. Request to the mayor to authorize the project funding agreement, I thought that could be handled. With this presentation, we both have brought along the whole process, both through B and F presentations and then. Here, and the full committee, so there's no new information, we put the statement of interest back when we asked for their out with us. Um, so this is now, I think all we were waiting for was their, their vote, right? We know what their project funding agreements look like.
Right, right, that's also, that's also, you do want to wait for the actual, the actual PFA, or the field, in terms of. Rapid game, whether that's, you know, the fifteenth is fine for this, you know, because we don't, we don't even have it, we won't have it until. Your second being in September, so, I just, I just, I just wanted. your second being in September. So I just, I just want to make sure folks, you know, cover what you're voting on, whether you're comfortable now, it's fine, or whether you want to wait for the actual PFA. The timing still is, is fine for that.
I would recommend do it if we can, you know, ahead of time. It's no sense. It's not gonna, it certainly won't slow it down for us to do it faster. You don't want to find out at the end that we waited too long, that document.
And if anyone has questions, BNF, discuss this many different times at our meetings and then at Felicia. It's all available on Zoom. You know, it's pretty thorough.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't think we, I don't know what the, the final project will say, but who's going to review that anyway? Who's, is that something the city's going to go over again?
Yeah, that's, that's the
So it's not on our side, it's on the city's side anyway?
Take a look at that.
Yeah.
You know, and I think for anybody out there in Zoom land, any of us who went to O'Malley School for the last, you know, four years knows that this is a, certainly a long overdue project, you know, the windows, the original for the most part. So it's, it creates more efficiency in the building and that's what we're after. So like I said, we fully support it. We definitely want to program some of the out of money to the school department. And this is just one of the ways we're thinking about doing it.
So I guess the question is, do we are we comfortable? So the motion that I put on this agenda is to recommend to the mayor, Greg Verga, to approve the project funding agreement with the MSBA for the O'Malley window replacement project.
Is there certain language that the MSBA or NIS uses for this, like they did other projects?
No.
No.
Not for the, not for the PFA.
Okay.
If there would, if there would be certain, you will determine the funding, the, 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 the funding of the project. They have, I don't, I don't know. We can find, we'll find it out. I think it's most likely, most likely it'll be important for the, for the city council to have that, that exact language. Because they're, they're authorized. We're sort of requesting that they get it.
Yes. So the motion to make the request to me is, is good enough. And then when the actual paperwork comes from MSBA, you know, Suzanne's going to scour over it, whatever needs speed on her end, our end will be done.
Maria, motion? Are you ready?
Yeah, of course.
So I'll make a motion that we recommend to Mayor Greg Verga, the approval of the project funded agreement with the MSBA in the O'Malley window replacement project.
Second. It's moved, moved. Seconded any discussion? Yet again, the MSBA supports our schools and it's very important work for us to stay and we're glad to be part of it.
It's for, just so people can remember what was on the screen, fifty-nine percent reimbursement. That's, that's a pretty good deal. If somebody offered to give you fifty-nine percent for the replacement of your house.
Okay, Maria, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Jefferson Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
And Mia Verga?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. There's also a second motion that I put on the agenda, which is to request basically the funding process that we request that the administration begins that process to put in place the funding. Because we know there are certain steps that have to happen to get, you know, to, for you to think through and how that's going to happen and what goes into the city council. Because that's not us.
Right. And the city council has to approve the funding as well, right?
If, if we kind of bonding and, you know, I'd rather bond at least a part of that and get rid of because I don't want to put over six million dollars behind on your choice.
Well, I ask because the motion that suggests that city administration, I'm wondering if we should include city council as well.
Read how it
To recommend to the city administration that funding is secured for the O'Malley window replacement project.
I know, I think that's, that's good enough because I think we'll take the next steps to send it to the council.
I just didn't know we needed, school committee needed to send a
Well, we have to pass We have to pass your line up anyway.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to recommend to the city administration that funding is secured for the O'Malley window replacement project.
Finalize this second. Goodbye, Sam. Any discussion?
Yeah, just, just so I'm clear. So it's really the administration that's carrying the ball to the city council after this vote.
Yes.
I mean, we'll be working with Ben's office to make sure Yes.
Maria, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Jefferson Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
And Mia Verga?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. As you say, better to do it.
Right.
And be on the path. So if anybody sees their counselors or any counselors, they just want to kind of get a much of speed on what all the work that's been done. So they probably, you know, understand that we haven't really followed the process the way we have, but I'm, I'm sure they, anybody familiar with O'Malley would understand this is good.
I think, again, it's been a while, so we should, you know, give them, give them a follow up date, you know, as the process continues. I think I gave them a little update in springtime. Just the basics, where we were at.
It might be worth, might be about suspenders deal, but to invite them for a tour. I think of the BNF members, Jeff's part of them, who actually was a student. Started and then twenty-two, corrupt your school. So so just a suggestion. Yeah.
The ceiling, what's the ceiling called? The one, the library? The dome, have it stand right under the dome and November first.
Did do a nice job of keeping the cool air in last week. Reset for fall, clearly.
It's working. It used to not work.
So that's a good point. So that's part of the project, the replacement of that dome or?
Yes, well, yes. It, it, it's, it's one of the, some variation. Yeah. There needs to be more, more work on design, but yeah, that would be one of the bits.
Great.
But potential for that. It's in, it's in the, it's in the project budget. It's not reimbursable at this point.
All right. So those are the two of the three action items. The other action is to up, update of the base coverings policy filed EBCFA to align with two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year.
So I just want to show, you have in your packet the recommended language. Just want to show folks to remind from last week that students, the only place where we're requiring masks is when students or staff return from COVID. They must wear a mask, please, until after the tenth day, or when they first had symptoms or their, their test, positive test. In other situations, they're encouraged. And so, but because of the, the way the, the most recent database coverage, which was in February, is worded. Pull up here, it's in the back of, just, just show it. Is, let's stop that. Uh, just a minor changes really, just in terms of new, a new date, obviously. Mask drops all in multiple schools. That's, that's the way it is. Students, staff returning from five day isolation. That's a different term, okay? Because the, the different circumstances are added. Bottom quote, positive COVID tests are, you know, rather must, it's a fully recommended to follow strict mask use. Other than eating, drinking outside, active monitoring symptoms through day ten, symptom onset or positive test. So again, just want to be, really what's happening here is from last spring, winter to now, the recognition has gotten sort of more precise. And we want the, you want the, the post to, to reflect that precision, okay? And that's isolation versus quarantine. And that is, at this point, the guidelines are that folks must mask, first and foremost recommended. And then be clear about the symptoms onset or positive tests. So again, just trying to make it consistent with the state guidelines.
Just for clarification. So through day ten, so the way I understand it is symptom onset, positive tests in state zero.
Yes.
So wouldn't that be eleven days?
Well, on the eleventh day you return.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, yes. And so, and so that is also helping folks understand that, what day zero.
Yeah, right. That's, that's something that I think we're going to have to do some educating around.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, just for example, I mean, just, just a, an email from a parent today, just requesting more communication about it.
Yeah.
And so we'll, we'll go to reiterate it along the way. And that'll be, you know, social media, that'll be principals directly, you know, that'll be myself as well. But totally agree with that parent himself, that be a more communication, more iteration. Yeah. And then, and that also happens when folks report to our nurses, okay, or principals say, or, you know, to help them understand that, yeah.
So two things. So do we want to say students and staff returning to school from five day isolation following positive COVID test? Must, and then we want to take out the two, must follow strict, just a word there. And connect, and Justin, I'm sure you know this, but symptom onset and positive test aren't the same thing, actually. So those are not the same thing. So there may be some, I mean, that may be what the language is of the state, that's the language.
We, we could, I mean, the precise language is whichever is earlier. So we could have that.
Right. Because there may be confusion.
Yeah. I don't think you need returning to school. It's kind of a
Yeah.
Okay.
Want to make sure that we got those so effective, so, so must, the, the two after the word must, right?
Correct, yeah.
And then at the end, whichever is earlier, that missed one?
I don't know.
What's up, Ben?
What's the date? No, I was trying to figure out the date.
Just, so which is a question, must follow strict mask use? Must wear a mask? I mean, mask use? I think must wear a mask.
I'm sorry about that. My mic was on.
It's your mask. So, okay. Yeah, was that, must wear a mask?
Must wear a mask.
What was that, the first paragraph? Yeah. So it would read, after you see, you see where it's crossed, you see what's crossed out, recommended, it's crossed out, and then must. It reads must to follow strict mask use, which makes sense. Must wear a mask instead of follow strict mask use.
And then just to keep going and actively monitor the symptoms. Through day ten. I'm just trying to simplify the language, conduct active monitoring. Yeah, it's a little bit.
Active monitor? Okay. Not, not change the spirit or tendency.
No, no, it's just to try to simplify the language a little bit.
Actually, oh, and actually monitor, right?
Actively monitor for symptoms through day ten of symptom onset or positive test, whichever.
Trying to raise my hand here.
Oh, sorry, Kate. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I was just, um, I did not see where that came from, the, the must wear mask language. You said that came from DSE, Ben? Where did that come from?
Yep, from the Department, State Department of Public Health and the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And that's, that's, um, they're basic, yeah, that's where, and then those are the guidelines and protocols we've been following since day one of COVID.
Yeah. Yeah, because I looked at, all I found was, was August fifteenth was the latest I found. And it didn't mention anything like that.
No, that's policy. That's, we call the same thing.
So, so
So, I mean, I don't see any supporting material for that, honestly.
You don't see any what, Keith?
I didn't see any supporting material from DSE, both the health commissioner or the school commissioner.
Um, so let me, I can just share my screen from the Department of, I think from mass.gov. Just give me one moment here.
Yeah, I lost my page. I had it open, but I didn't, somehow I lost that.
So this is, um, mass.gov, COVID nineteen isolation exposure guidance for K to twelve. So there are in some, uh, as, as we've been doing since the beginning of COVID in the state, there's, there, there's sometimes particular guidance for particular uses or buildings or, or sort of settings, settings. And so if you just go down here, isolation and exposure, guidance protocols.
Thank you, Pastor.
I saw it a second ago.
Right. So and then it says in the bullets, if the individuals give them a mask, they have to do some
Yeah. Here. They must do, do so through day ten.
Yeah, I, I would, we're just trying to get out that it does say high quality, Matt. So we'll just plug that in.
So So this is exactly, sorry, um, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, uh.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was looking at the CDC and that's actually not what they, they also, what they do recommend is, they do recommend masking, but they also suggest that you could do either or. You could do two anti antigen tests within forty-eight hours of each other. And if they're negative, then they're not required to mask per CDC. Or it's not suggested that they mask. Say that if you're, if you have no symptoms, then you're not likely to transmit the disease. And if you have two negative antigen tests within forty-eight hours, then it's not required that they mask.
Can I just say something? So from day one, there's been conflicting recommendations from CDC and DSE. And the school committee has always followed DSE's suggestions and, and protocols. So, you know, as we move forward, I think that's just what we're going to, I think we need to continue to do because
That's what I, I consistently recommended that.
Well, I, I would recommend and move that we add that they have the option of doing two antigen tests within forty-eight hours. And if they're clear, then they're not required to wear masks.
I would like to stay consistent with DSE.
Can I ask a question? And it's my bad for not being here at the last meeting. And I didn't watch that part of the meeting. I'm so excited about the name of the school. So what did you present at the last meeting that was literature from DSE?
Uh, I, I provided you with their memo.
Okay.
Which lays us out very clearly.
Okay.
It wasn't in your bag. I, I did provide that to you earlier that week. And then, and then also, and then, and then I shared, what I shared earlier tonight, the slide show.
I just wanted to see the memo. But you can go on and just Yeah.
The CDC page also says that you are most infectious within the first five days if you have symptoms. So.
Go ahead, all right.
Um, uh, just to say, through the two and a half, three years of this, there has been sort of consistently conflicting information from federal authorities and state authorities, and um, we, we really, uh, because we are a Massachusetts, uh, school, um, we have, as a school district, we have followed D E C in the Massachusetts, uh, uh, Department of Public Health. Um, you may, you may find, and that's, you know, totally um, appropriate if you choose to look at the World Health Organization, or there's all sorts of different uh, instructions that have been in play for the past, since, since March of twenty twenty, and so that's been our consistent. That's been how we've done it, um, as a school district in Massachusetts.
So, uh, yeah, I'm just trying to point out that they're not consistent with the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control.
Yes, and that has been the case for the past, I mean, we've had this over and over, and I promise that I've read all of it, and.
You, you've read the CDC guidance?
Yes. And I would say that we've consistently followed the Department of, uh, Elementary and Secondary Education and the Mass Department of Public Health as our, sort of, as our. And I don't see necessarily, you know.
Can I ask Keith a question?
Sure.
Keith, just 'cause I'm curious, uh, is, is my understanding that you're recommending that you follow the CDC guideline? Or that there's a hybrid of the two, or what do you say?
Well, I'm saying that, that Mass isn't including their, their or recommendation, their follow, uh, it seems like Mass is following the first part of the recommendation and not the second part of the recommendation from CDC. So it's, our, our policy would be consistent with the first part of the recommendation of masking, uh, but not with the option of taking two consecutive forty-eight hours apart antigen tests. It's, uh, seemingly missing from, uh, you know, it reflects the first part, Mass, Department of Health, but it does not reflect the second part of the CDC recommendation. So I, I was making a motion to include the full recommendation, not the partial recommendation.
We could go around and around, but if Keith would like to make a motion that we include the forty-eight, uh, the two antigen test per hour, um, and then if it passes, we continue, if not, then we revert that, and then we will have an option to vote for the draft that the commission already discussed.
Okay, Keith, do you want to make a amended motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, um, include the, the second half of the CDC's recommendations of, of the antigen tests forty-eight hours apart to be free of mask requirements. I mean, to reflect the language of the CDC in, in that.
I'll second that, purpose is a discussion.
Okay, all right, discussion.
I don't have a problem with it, but if it does, wrote it down, I'll spell the original language. Uh, I, I have no problem with including that, I don't think it hurts anybody in it.
Um, well, what it does do is put the bonus on someone to test and verify tests. And we no longer have, I mean, the state is no longer supporting schools to test. So I would, my question, or my question in discussion, it would be who's testing, who's verifying?
So devil's advocate, um, it would be, I, I'm the fifth grader, I have, you know, I've given up a COVID. I come to school with the test that my parents had, and again, here you go, this is one from Friday, this one from, uh, Tuesday, whatever it is, four days later. And that's it. So I'm not saying whether or not I think it's a good idea, I'm just saying, it's, we're not gonna be sitting there, hold still, while we swap you, we'll have the results in three days. You know, it's, it's, it's gonna be, the burden's gonna be on the parents slash kids to give the results. Uh, it's just like, instead of the school, exactly.
Think there's an equity issue, given that we no longer have rapid tests being given to families?
We don't have any, huh? I believe we have. Cutting it up, they're cutting, they're cutting it up right at the, uh, the federal ones, that you know, there's something, what you say.
Correct.
Okay.
We have a huge list of, uh, resources for these tests, I believe you, uh, Ben, Ben mentioned those in the last meeting.
Well, so one of those resources, they're ending today, so the federal government is no longer sending free tests. And as discussed last week, not every insurance company is covering free tests.
It's difficult to get free first time.
And it, I just ordered some, and it's taking over two weeks to get them.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, I think that, I, you know, back to Kathy's point, that there is a huge equity issue, I think if we were able to do the testing in the schools or provide tests, I think that motion would, you know, hold some weight, but at this point, I would like to continue to follow D E C's guidance, because it's an equity issue, and it's, it puts us in a position of not being able to sort of track that information in a meaningful way.
Respect in your position, Keith, well, my understanding, listening to Samantha, is that the tests, testing might not be available to families that as per the CDC, I mean, we just might not be able to get tested, the kid could be in kind of limbo waiting for tests, is that what I'm understanding, like, oh, I gotta wait for my test, I can't, can't really get back to school, 'cause I don't have the means to show that I'm clear of COVID, or?
No, so like, so if I can't get a free test
Well.
through my insurance.
Yeah.
I would then have to have enough money.
Yeah.
Twenty dollars a pop at this point to go to C D S, Wolverine, and get them, which is a lot of money.
Yeah.
Um, and so, you know, back to, you know, I think at this point, it's, it's harder to get them than we sort of think.
Right, so knowing that, sorry. I'm sorry, no.
No, 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 I was talking to Greg, not you.
Just trying to finish my thought of, so really, the, the, the disagreement with it is with Keith's proposal is that the access to those tests, like, it's difficult for people to get the tests, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
There's an equity issue, some people might be able to get them easily, some people may not be able to.
And the availability of set tests, I mean, they're not, they're just not as readily available as it was.
Still want to talk? Yeah, I'm just trying to capture everybody's thoughts and listen and sleep my mind like I usually do. Um, so, what I've experienced with COVID over the past couple of months is that everybody reacts differently to COVID. Some people have it a couple of days, some people are over, over it after five days and do test negative, and some people will test for up to a month positive, um, even though they don't have symptoms, right? So, I struggle to kind of put COVID in a box and try to have a one size fits all solution, because I believe there will be kids that after five days are gonna be negative and don't need a mask, and I think they have every right not to wear a mask if they're negative. So I don't like the idea of just saying ten days, um, in this plan, if the CDC is not saying it as well, I, I agree that we've always done what D E C says. And that has guided us almost always, not always, um. But I don't know that I have to stick with just what D E C says, where we're getting information from boards of health and other people that have difference of opinions, even with what D E C says. So I'm okay second, um, with Keith's motion, because if a family is doing the right thing by getting their child tested while in school, I believe that family has every right to advocate for their child not to wear another ma, a mask for additional five days, because while most kids, I think, do well with masks, most kids have not been wearing masks now, and to go back to the mask like I had to do when I got COVID, it was worse than when it was when we were wearing them all the time. So Keith's motion to amend doesn't scare me. Um, as far as this big transmission that would happen in school, if kids that do tests on the antigen test come back negative and come back without a mask, I'm not that afraid of it, you know, I mean, people aren't getting as sick as they used to with COVID, and we're learning to live with it, and we better learn to live with it, 'cause it is never going away. And I'm someone that, as I've been very clear in the past, I'm not a supporter of wearing masks as much as possible. I think we wear masks as least as possible. So, I'm okay, I would support Keith's motion, as long as the family was able to go through those two negative tests, I'm not worried about.
Um, so just to be clear, they would still have to wear a mask for an extra forty-eight hours, they have to take two tests forty-eight hours apart, so they wouldn't just be able to stop wearing a mask after that fifth day.
They'd go back to school.
What, what? In forty-eight hours. Based on.
Okay.
So, in theory, you say like, Monday and Tuesday, they have negative.
I'm having trouble hearing all of a sudden.
One second.
To the microphone.
Yeah, one second. Can you?
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Did we miss a lot for? Um, and then I guess sort of the question that I would have for discussion is, who then are we? Who's tracking this? Are we putting this on nurses? And this creates a whole nother sort of protocol, and I think it's worth, as the committee, to consider that when we're voting on this, right? That then we're, we have to provide sort of an additional support to, so, around tracking these tests.
We have no way of tracking that.
No.
We have no way of tracking it.
Can I, can I butt in here? I thought we already talked about.
Hold on, Keith.
Yeah.
Hold on, Laura's had her hand up.
So, um, I hear your concern, Keith, and I'm glad you've made a motion, reflecting that. I would say a couple of things. Um, one, given the, um, uh, passion that exists around masks and around masking in schools, um, I would want the, if we were to follow something where testing was a requirement in a certain amount of time to then come back, that would need, from my perspective, to be done in a way that can be verified. Um, so that's just one piece. Also, and again, I've really read all this, I'm in the W H O website now, and they still are recommending people stay distant in school and cover coughs and sneezes with, you know, wear masks when you can't distance and other things. So through this pro, through these years, there have been different, um, recommendations from different organizations. And, um, there's no, there's no one perfect system, I, this, I think our district did an amazing job getting through this the way we have. And yes, people are extremely tired of masks and almost no one wears them now, and, you know, that's fully understandable. And from the Mass Department of Public Health, which has removed masking in schools as of, you know, March first, they're saying this is what they consider to be, um, a reasonable expectation in Massachusetts schools. Um, my instinct, because we can continue to look and find different regulations and different, um, advice from different bodies. The CDC is extremely significant, D E C and the Mass Department of Public Health are extremely significant, the World Health Organization's significant, all of these people have knowledgeable public health, uh, experts who are advising different things. That has happened throughout this pandemic. Um, so from my perspective, I think, A, I would want verification if we were to take this kind of thing, and also, um, I think we should be consistent in how we move forward, um, given that we don't know what the next few months will bring, and I don't know that, and, and, and having been on this committee through this pandemic, one thing that has been difficult is to have to act as public health, uh, making people who make, who vote on public health, when we are not public health experts. So, I prefer to rely on the public health experts in Massachusetts to guide us as we.
Is, so I started this, for the first discussion, so we can stop going around in circles, we continue to go around in circles. I think we pretty much know where the boat's gonna go, so I'm, I say move the question.
Well, I, I would disagree with that, because there's, this could really significantly change how we sort of move forward, and I, I'm hoping that through this discussion, that we can change some minds, because the administration is gonna have to sort of change its course of action, depending on how people vote right now, and I'm not sure at this point how people are gonna vote, so purpose of the discussion is, is to inform everybody of sort of the outcomes and the impact on people who are actually gonna have to do this work.
Well.
And so I, I do think that that's really important for us to.
Well, I mean, well, since I know, I know how they're vote, I don't think it's gonna pass, so my count, so I just, if we keep talking about it, talking about it, but in the end, it's not going anywhere, so I, I move the question this. Right, my suggestion.
Um, I just have a question, I'd like to ask the superintendent, are there, do we have the tests, any, any more tests that were not the rapid tests?
So we do have tests.
Um, so if a family needed to.
Well, we have tests that, um, will expire in December, January. You know, there are the number of tests that would be used over one week, if we district, like we last year.
Yeah, I'm not saying that.
But, but, um, I, Jeff, I was discussing this today, because, uh, it's likely that November, December, we work, will be different than today. And we would like to hold on to those tests, preparing for, as opposed to using them widely now, regularly now. So, um, if we can buy more tests at five dollars a pop, that would go very quickly. That'd be, that'd get expensive very quickly, in a significant way. And we don't, you know, go ahead and have a plan to use resources to buy tests. So that's why we're, um, using the ones now, for those who are, uh, significantly need, and also be prepared for when things slightly get worse.
Awesome, to the superintendent, I apologize if you've mentioned this, answered this last week, 'cause I don't know. So, to my understanding, schools are not doing any tracking in any testing.
The only, the only track we're doing is people self-report to us about getting COVID, and then we'll help them explain about the dates and deadlines, it's like.
So, question if they report it, right, 'cause we're on the honest system now. Um, so does that mean, and I'm just trying to learn so I can decide how I'm gonna vote on this, does that mean when someone reports that their student, um, has COVID, you're tracking day zero, one, two, three, four, and five, and then up to ten afterwards? Is a nurse getting involved with that schedule of COVID for each student?
Yeah.
Tell me what it, what the nurses are gonna do, even if we didn't amend this motion?
So all, all they'll be doing, very simply, is you're writing down the date of onset, you know, the, the zero, writing down, um, what day six would be, the day they come back, if they're, you know, and those symptoms are, 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 are better, okay, um, then, uh, also with day eleven, your day or ten, day or, day ten or day eleven, so that's, so those three days, basically, that's.
And that's if a parent reports it, and if a parent reports it correctly.
Yeah, well, yeah, if a parent reports it.
And is there gonna be a follow-up to, for a nurse to say, wait, he's only on day seven and he's not wearing a mask in the hallway? I mean, redoing this work, it seems to me that we're not supposed to be, so I'm trying to.
Yeah, as I was asking, we don't have any way of, um, and the work, those are staff have the capacity.
Right.
To, um, you know, track down every child and, and act in that way, we did that to some degree, um, the first year. We had more staff, and also many, many fewer cases, by exponentially fewer cases.
But I thought I heard when D E C made this announcement, that there is no expectation for the school staff to be doing any track.
But I thought I heard when Jesse made this announcement that there was no expectation for the school staff to be doing any tracking or any testing this school year so far, unless things go crazy.
There was no contact tracing. Um, there, there, no, there's no expectation for us to report to Desi. We're essentially doing that as a, as a courtesy, as a support to families.
Well, I'm listening to what Laura's saying as far as verifying tests. Do we ever verify tests before?
I, I don't.
What type of tests they're taking and when and asking them to bring in a positive or a negative?
Yeah, so a couple of things on this, um, that I would say, one, consistently with, with how we've approached guidelines in the past, I think continues to be important, okay? Part of the reason that this committee and prior committee has handled this so well, it's because you weren't debating on sources. Things are getting more complicated than they are right now today, okay? I, I believe opening up the display on what source we use will hinder the committee's work going forward. And, and I worry about that. You could choose to worry about that. Um, the other piece is consistency in operating school also matters a lot. And I understand, um, there's pretty, as I can tell, you know, consensus on, um, importance of, of that the health of masks to do, okay? And for us to be clear communications around what to do matters. We talked about that. What's, what's day zero? What's day one? What's day five? What's day ten? Okay? To be able to have a very consistent approach, consistent rule, which people can understand easily and follow easily, helps people stay healthy. So, um, you know, and I, so yes, I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
So when you're commenting, this is my less, just trying to pull it all together. So worrying about who we listen to and hearing Laura say public health, isn't CDC considered public health? Well, to some organization, to some degree, I mean, Desi is not public health, doesn't she? Well, they rely with, they speak to professionals from public health. So I understand they're getting the information directly from public health. So, but I just find it odd that we're, we're saying, don't listen to CDC here. Because that's the message I'm getting.
I think you missed the example Laura gave, but Laura gave the example of who, World Health Organization, which has stricter guidelines.
Right, but Desi is what we're talking about on his.
It wasn't just Desi, it was Desi and the Mass Department of Public Health, is my understanding. So it is our public health body of state.
Yeah, and, and that's who we follow anyways. It's never been Desi. It's been Desi and the Department of Public Health who are all relying on the same, on their, uh, health experts. So that's just, that's the, what we're doing.
And I would just like to remind folks who were on the previous committees that CDC had stricter guidance at the very beginning of this than Desi. And I was somebody who was like, wait a minute, what's happening here? Why are we not, why is it not consistent? And I, I trusted sort of the will of the committee and also Desi and sort of voted to follow Desi's guidance at that point. And that's what we've done consistently through day one until today. Um, and so it has sort of, they've overlapped, one's been stricter, one's been less strict, over and over again. And the thing that, to reiterate what Ben said, that we have done well is consistently stayed with Desi's guidance. And I think we need, and we need to continue to do that.
So my only concern with this, this is all I'm gonna say on it, is that you have parents out there like Keith, many others out there that know that there is this exception to Desi's rule or Desi's suggestion by getting tested during the two negative tests. So to me, that does not enforce the honest system because I truly believe you're gonna have parents now that aren't gonna be honest. Because they're gonna say, CDC says if you have two negative tests, you're okay. I'm looking out for my child and he doesn't, he or she doesn't want to wear a mask, so I'm just not gonna tell anybody. Because the school committee is choosing to do something stricter than what the CDC is saying. We rely on the CDC as well as one source. That's my concern about this. I'm not trying to, to convince anyone to feel otherwise, but we are go, we are on the honest system with COVID right now and adding, not allowing something that is out there to, um, eliminate mask wear. And I think it's setting us up for more issues of the honest system not being adhered to. That's just how I.
Go ahead, Keith.
Yeah, um, yeah, I just want to say, um, that we're currently in a low level for community level of COVID nineteen and, um. Also, we're already expecting parents to conduct tests uh, for their children in, in the initial onset of symptoms. And, and then we're saying that it wouldn't be fair to expect them to test again it as an option. Or, or they could simply wear a mask and then, and that we're doing this for equity. So we're removing that option from anyone else that would, would, would opt for that option. Is that what I'm hearing? I mean, we're already expecting them to take the tests in the first place on the honor system, like you say. And then all of a sudden, we're saying that expecting them to test isn't equitable.
We don't have any requirements for testing. Like, that's not part of our policy, right? Like, if people have symptoms, they should test, right? Like, that's just part of COVID at this point. The one thing I'll say, just sort of back to was this point of like people looking out for their kids. I think that as a district and as a committee, we need to, to be consistent in saying that like, yes, you should be looking out for your own kid, but you should also be looking out for the greater.
And know that I was not.
No, 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 but, no, no, no. I'm not saying you are, but I'm saying this for the community, right? That like, as a parent, I would appreciate it if you would do the right thing. And I think that as a committee, we need to stay consistent in, in communicating that, that our school health is greater than just sort of your individual child's.
So doing the right thing would be testing, right?
Right, go ahead, Laura.
Um, so just, um, to follow on that, as also as a parent. Um, you know, I, I think one of my overarching goals this whole time has been how do we keep our schools open? How do we keep our staff and our students healthy enough to be in school and to have our schools open? I'm actually a Beeman parent and our school had to close last December because there weren't, there wasn't enough staff to keep this school open. So, um, we've done, I think Ben and his team have done a remarkable job with Karen Carroll and then Jeff Parko and Max to sort of walk this fine line of different opinions and different feelings around all of these precautions. And to do everything we can to keep kids in school, right? So I'm hearing tonight that Jess, you know, Jeff is saying to Ben that, you know, this, we're in August thirty first. Once we go into winter, they're expecting there'll be more cases. Okay, that happens with the flu, that happens with other things. Um, I think it's my goal to keep our kids in school, to keep our kids as healthy as possible, to keep our staff as healthy as possible so that we can have kids in school. And, um. And I hope that, you know, I think that parents want to do the best thing for their kid and for their classroom and for their teachers and all the staff. And I'm hoping that that's how, how people are going through it. We can't, we're, we are not, we haven't been, we haven't been insisting that we test people, right? If someone's very visibly sick in school, I'm assuming they are sent home. But otherwise, we're hoping that everyone works together to keep our schools open and to keep our students safe and our staff safe. And again, having gone through this, like, I personally am not a public health expert. I don't know if anyone on this committee is a public health expert. So that is why we have been following the Mass Department of Public Health on their recommendations through this pandemic.
I haven't spoken yet. I do think I would feel, I, I will go with, we have been consistent with following Desi guidelines. And I think that's really important from a procedural thing. I do think there will be families that can test their kid and say their kid's negative, and that's fine, because I think the, um, there's not gonna be like a stick associated if someone does not wear a mask. But the goal of the policy and the goal of the procedures that are put in place are to keep everybody as healthy as they can. So. So I'm okay with the honor system of, you know, if somebody, if it's five days, the reality is likely two of those days, those kids are on, are home on the weekend. And they don't have to have on a mask. Second thing is if COVID becomes, you know, if there's a flare up, this policy is really even more important than right now. So, um. So I, I kind of in between having, you know, following Desi and making our policy that that's our expectation because that's our expectations that we keep kids at school, um, as many as we can. And if somebody comes with a negative test and don't wear a mask, no one's gonna get them in trouble. So I just think that the messaging and, and making it easy from a messaging perspective and an expectation perspective hopefully lets everybody know our intent is we want everybody to do the right thing. And the right thing is if you're still sick, if you're still positive, you really step on that mask. If you're negative, then you're still doing the right thing if you don't wear masks, because now you know you are not contagious. Right? So I wanna be clear on the, I, I think from a, uh, administration perspective, the clarity around this, around the policy that, um, and, and I do not wanna, you know, go back and forth as to who's saying to do what, because I, we have been very consistent that we have gone with state guides. Very consistent. So I don't wanna pick and choose either. So, um. Some kind of, you know, I, I don't think anybody's gonna get in trouble if they don't wear a mask because they tested negative. Or even if they haven't tested.
I have a comment, not, not an opinion, but I have a question. Procedurally, what we're doing right now, okay, right, no. Well, so we have Desi that is saying one thing. We have the CDC that is adding to what Desi said. And we have mass.gov saying five days negative, no mask. So we are creating a policy right now, knowing mass.gov, public health officials involved, Desi, public health officials involved, and CDC, whatever you wanna call, um, label them. So we're gonna make a policy but not follow through with it. That's where I'm starting to get wishy-washy with this, because I hear what you're saying, and I understand everybody, I respect everyone's opinion on this. And to be honest with you, I think we're really spending too much time on this, knowing it's only a couple of days. However, there are parents out there, they're gonna dig their heels in and how they feel. And when you have three different agencies that are all very well respected, saying different things, we're making a policy just to keep the message consistent, but yet we're not gonna follow through with it if they violate it. To me makes no sense. So I don't mean to add to this conversation, but mass.gov says five days you're negative, no masks. CDC says five, ten days, or, but if you get the two tests and they're negative, you don't have to wear a mask. Desi saying, wear a mask, five day, isolate for five days and then wear a mask for five days. That's not consistency anywhere. And you're gonna have families that are gonna be reading this. And you just said, as a policymaker right now, we're not gonna do anything for those that violate policy that we're making because of these other sources. So now.
Not because of the other sources, but because, you know, I'm sure their doctors would say they don't need to wear masks.
Right. So if you understand that, then how do you support a policy that says, uh, wear it for ten days? No, but I'm just saying, that sounds to me like their message is, as long as the school's message is consistent and easy, we're okay. But if nobody follows it because their kids test negative after five days, that's okay too. I just wanna be clear on what we're doing here, because we're making a policy that we're not having the expectation that parents are gonna follow through with it because of the other public health information that's out there.
I'm just, I'm reading mass.gov. That's where Ben displayed this from. The mass, the, the, the guidance on school is mass.gov. That, that's, I can, I mean, it's mass.gov slash info details COVID isolation exposure guidance for children and staff childcare K through twelve. So that's where this, that's, that's where they test, they isolate for five days and then they wear, and then they wear high quality masks through day ten. I see. So, so we can't control what they do, right? They have completed their own policy. So that, I mean, how can we possibly deal with that? Like, welcome to COVID, right?
So this has been, this has been the keys. I mean, we, we've had this session for two and a half years, right? Like, this is not new.
Right.
And so I think like as a district, I think the question is how do we want, what messaging do we want?
So. I don't really like his language as the amendment, but I do wonder, but I do like the negative test idea. So Ben, wanna give us some, do you want us to hash it out, or do you wanna?
I, I, I can bring them a recommendation.
Yes.
It's in your hands.
Can I just ask a question about what they've written here?
Yeah.
So here's how I read it. They've got like a big, you know, they have the outer bullet and the inner. Right? If the individual is able to mask, they must do this, do some through day ten. So that's, and they go in, if the child has a negative test on day five or later, they do not mask. So do you wanna include, I mean, do you wanna just copy that? We'll copy what they, I mean, I don't advocate for that, but maybe we, this is their language. I don't know.
Who's this?
This is mass.gov. So this is the state.
Yeah, could I make a suggestion? Why don't we scrap our policy and the policy just says refer to that?
Exactly.
Because does that change? It's mass.gov, not CDC, not Desi, which is education. You know, it's like the state's official health department is saying this. And if our policy says follow their guidelines, we don't keep voting to change it.
But then they're gonna ask for the guidelines.
So.
You essentially have that in here already. Okay, and then you're, we, we add some specificity. So based on where you were in February, except that second bullet that says about you don't listen.
Just so, how about we just add to the.
Negative test day, when they return masks. You know? So five minutes ago, we were saying, I'm going back and forth with this myself. But five minutes ago, we were saying, we're following Desi because that's the state guidelines, state health guidelines. But this is the, I mean, I didn't open this webpage, but you're telling me this is mass.gov, health, official health, Mass Department of Health. And it doesn't match what we've got in our policy, which five minutes ago was from the state.
Right, well, it's, if, if you look at their language, they must do so through day ten, is what they say, and then they write something else. So they do both.
Yes.
Why can't we just list in our policy to follow Desi and mass.gov guidelines?
Because we have to.
Well, and.
I think Desi links to this.
Desi links to that. This is Desi. This is Desi's.
So where did that, that part about testing, sorry, negative test appear?
That's CDC. CDC was saying that you negative.
So that one. Mass.gov, the Department of Health says, uh, if the child has a negative test on day five or later, you do not need to mask.
So this policy that we have includes language to which certain, certain circumstances may require masking in particular outbreaks and things like that. We have given super attention and the school the ability to address, you know, if there is a flare up, so.
So, so wait, if we read what we're, what's on the policy, right? And I'm taking what Keith has to say in reply, students and staff returning from the five day isolation, because everyone has to do the isolation, right? Follow up other code tests, must follow strict mask use other than when eating blah, 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 for up to day ten. We can improve that language because strict mask use is that and Desi. We're not saying follow Desi, we're saying must follow strict mask use, right? So strict mask use includes that, if they're negative. If they're not negative, then they can take the two S's. And then if they're still positive, they still have to follow mask use. It's not saying who's strict mask use. It's saying that you must follow masks, you must follow strict mask use. So that includes that, because that is strict, saying, you know, first five days you have to isolate. It's just not saying the five days after you have to wear the mask. It's included in strict mask use, is how I see it. So we don't have to change this because it will include whatever strict mask use is. And the strict mask use is, if you test negative after five days, you don't wear a mask. However, if you test positive after five days, then there's more mask use. You have to, if you don't test, you still, and if you don't test, then you're still wearing it.
So they only change.
Right, Laura, just, so we're not, we're not referencing Desi in this, we're just saying we have to follow strict mask use. There it is.
Am I, am I giving families different guidance? It's in this week.
I think. It sounds like. Well, Keith's amendment's on the table, so we just go ahead and down. If indeed it gets voted down, which looks like it would. We revert to the, the corrections we made. I don't know, two and a half hours ago, we started this guy. And and then that was the big. Cause the interpretation from this committee is pointing back to these other things, the more.
And you're messaging to families, you can do the link to mass.gov, and you can do the link to Desi, and there's your support.
Right, Ben, I, I can, I will do that, I can do that, but I also have to be very crystal clear in the, in the, in, in one or two sentences. Exactly what it is.
Yeah, we need to be crystal clear about what the expectation.
But you can add that to your protocol.
I just don't, I just don't know if the expectation's changing because of this.
Well, can I ask you a question? Because it seems like what you're, is trying to be an easy way of just saying, you gotta wear a mask for ten days, that's easy to message, everybody understands it, no big deal, right? But families know that that's not necessarily how it is, where our places aren't following that protocol on our home. And we're on the honest system now, and parents have a right. To not put a mask on their kid after five days, if they're negative, right? So we wanna encourage the honest system for honesty. We wanna protect the kids if the other students. If a, if a student returns with still testing positive, even though they don't have symptoms. So.
I didn't, I didn't try.
I just think you can list the three different ways of what happens. If your child tests negative after five days, you don't need a mask. If they do, then you get antigen test, or if you don't wanna do the antigen test, stay masked for ten days.
So that's, that's what I'm asking for fair on that. Is that what now we're gonna be putting?
We'd have to, we'd have to hold on it.
Right, so it's three different situations, right? Five days negative, no mask. Five days positive, wear a mask, and if you can prove two tests that came out negative, then you can take your mask off, or just wear the mask for the ten days. So it's three simple. Instructions. Then covers everybody's.
Still clear the, the, the conflict between uh the, 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 the Desi. The, the master of health and CDC, and oh, and the conflict within. With the two paragraphs is one statement.
Right, so that's.
So this would be the clear as mud policy, I would suspect.
The irony of this discussion is the amendment is actually stricter.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so.
But that's embedded in Desi's guidance, so.
So what we would tell families. Is.
Is this the same thing?
Yes.
These three things, right?
Yes.
That's my interpretation, yeah.
Exactly. And that's a strict mask use.
But. I think the one thing. To be, to clarify that, as Melissa just said. If you choose not to test, or you can't test.
But no one's gonna really know what's going on anyway, cause we're on the honest system, and no one.
But if we're putting this out in a policy, and we're following this.
Ben, can you also include the next bullet, because it does say that. Best practice would be to continue wearing a mask if you have symptoms.
Right, of course.
Yeah, yeah, but.
No, but this is.
It's the next bullet down. Symptomatic individuals remain in their school program, if they have mild symptoms, they're tested on site, and that test is negative.
You know, the whole thing.
Okay, so. Yeah, I like. I think I like this piece.
I just need, I think we need to be clear about what Ben is gonna relay.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out, right? Because I think. You know, we're saying too long ago, does it guidance, does he guidance is beyond MPH? I think it's children and staff down to the second. I guess my question is, so say they test negative on day five, but they're still symptomatic.
Test negative.
Still symptomatic.
We're not.
Right, so that again, that's what it says in here, right?
Totally correct, absolutely.
To, to continue wearing a mask if you're symptomatic, even if you test negative. So it's recommended.
It's recommended.
Cause if you're negative, you're negative, but you can still have symptoms, because we don't know everything about COVID yet.
I'm not seeing anything if you're sharing the screen.
Can you speak up?
I said, uh, if you're not, if you're sharing the screen, I'm not seeing anything. I thought, I thought you were sharing something.
Yeah, I'm not either.
Oh, yeah, cause it's been tied to computers.
Hold on one second, Keith, there it is. Can you, can you see it?
It's the same page we were sharing before, Keith.
Yeah, okay.
This page, okay? You can see it?
Yes.
And we're encouraging people, I mean, encouraging the policy, if you're not well, stay home. No, either stay home or wear a mask. If you've got a sore throat, wear a mask, come to school, learn. Right? You got a cold, don't sneeze at everybody.
Every day, all day, COVID.
Right, it's kinda nice to do that. It would be nice if people, more people did it than. So. I think that section is your protocols, that.
Which section?
Children and staff down to the. If the, uh. Yeah.
And then the symptomatic.
But at the same time, say, stay home if you're symptomatic.
No, and we've said that.
We said it anyway, right?
And, and we've also said, we've also said.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So I think the first one is to vote on Keith's amendment.
Okay.
The second one, if it fails, is to add that instead of his amendment.
Right.
And then devote it to the revised policy.
Keith, did you hear that?
Yeah, yeah, I did that, but I did hear that, but yeah, now that I'm looking at this, it seems really like it's conflicting, isn't it?
Yeah, all of it's conflicting.
It, it makes no sense.
Okay, Keith, we're gonna vote on the amendment.
Your amendment.
Your amendment. So. Maria, we'd like to vote on the amendment.
I have a question, you're calling in amendment, but was there an original motion to approve the policy? As is?
Policy. Oh, I don't think we ever.
No, there wasn't a motion to.
It wasn't a motion.
No, 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 there was never a motion on the first draft that changed, that we're making the corrections to.
Right.
Cause he was plugging in that addition. Sort of consensus, automatically.
Okay, so we're now voting on his motion.
His motion.
Wait, but he did a motion to amend, and there was no motion to amend to begin with.
I think he's saying he wanted to amend.
Not, he made a motion to amend. Okay, so we are voting on the amended. Let's see the language. Okay.
That Keith represented.
That Keith represented. Okay, Maria?
Ms. Watson.
Thank you for catching us.
So.
Ms. Weason.
No.
Chairperson Clancy.
No.
Mr. Melvin.
No.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
No.
And Mayor Verga.
No.
Okay, so that amendment fails. Um, okay, so now we have the policy as romantically enhanced.
But one of my enhancements may not work with this. Cause one of my enhancements was, I thought was just language. But it was.
Could I, Ben, can you share the screen with that?
Yeah.
It was instead of must follow strict. Mask use, but that's what's in there now. So I, I had offered a change of. Must wear a mask. So we wanna be careful, because I don't know that that's.
I know your policy.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. So.
Wait.
It is on my screen.
So Ben is suggesting he's changing this, right? That's, that's what we're doing here.
This is, this is what he is.
Or did this come out of subcommittee?
No, no, this because we're starting school.
Right, so the superintendent bring this forward to update the policy. So as we're updating it, we can add whatever we want to, and then make a motion to approve it. Correct, right? So we're in that phase, back in that phase.
Right, so, so could I ask Ben to read up the, the last round of?
Oh, yes, okay. Uh, effective August thirty first, twenty twenty two, masks are optional in most schools. Students and staff through five day isolation upon COVID test. Must. Wear a high quality mask. Other than when eating, drinking, or outside. And actively monitor symptoms from day ten from exposure. I'm sorry, from symptom onset or positive test, whichever is earlier.
So going back to that, why do we eliminate, why are we eliminating follow strict mask, and why do we make, make it be?
I think.
More expensive mask when we're talking about equity.
She was, well, one of the Desi guy, like, language that. Second, she was trying to be clear about must wear masks, but strict mask use might be the better.
Right. We also have masks to give.
We do have those to give.
Or need them. So can we go back to follow strict mask use? Why don't we just, can we just take, where, where is?
Well, the, the issue is that if they change their policy. On mask wearing.
They mean mask.
Right, then we have to then update.
So this is gonna be different, I mean, this sort of encompasses sort of what you're gonna send. What you send to families and what is in that guidance.
Yeah, just, just as, just as, um. I mean, you, you, so we create policy, and then we carry out the operational administration of that. And which often, just like, you know, often typically, you know, as more detail or specifics.
Okay.
Um, it's helpful to get a direction from all of you on this specific piece, just because of. That's. Or that star.
That's okay. So just a question, as we formulate, so could we say. Uh, must follow strict mask use. As. Uh, as described by the Mass Department of Public Health.
Uh, we think it's, uh. You, you have something, just, I look at the next paragraph. That's where, that's where you purposely laid out that we, and we follow.
Okay, so then you don't need it.
I mean, just, I just read through them, cause major.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think that covers us.
So we're really not making major. Just change the date, really?
No, but, I mean, no, but, but you, you've, you've given clarity in terms of, in terms of those bullets, and that's important, that is, that is a change. But that's what we're changing.
Right, and we have to change the source down here too, right? Cause that's not just a M A S C. God knows what they have in their policy.
I think we didn't even.
No. M A S C policy by a river, I think that's right, is we actually added this paragraph. I mean, and C policy was the rest of this, I believe. I think that's.
Okay, so, does someone wanna read what?
What's actually in blue now?
Well, what we're, what we're, no, this isn't exactly.
No, no, I mean, what?
Right, yes.
If you get the paragraph from a read based on.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure about the, what we just, what we just said, strict masks. We're back to Alberta. Let me get this shot. Maria, you paying attention?
Yes.
Effective August thirty first, twenty twenty two. Masks are optional in the classroom of schools. Students and staff returning from five day isolation following a COVID test. Must follow strict mask use, other when eating, drinking, or outside. And must actively monitor for symptoms from day ten from exposure. No, sorry, from symptom onset or positive tests, whichever is.
Why can't you just end it at data active monitoring for symptoms through day ten?
Yeah, cause what? Yeah, the start data is different depending on.
So not only that, if you still, if you still, um, there's, there's, you can still test positive with the antigens. Uh, per CDC, uh, and, and B can, you know. Transmitting. Sorry. After ten days, I think, you get a monitor symptoms and, and, or test, is what the CD was saying.
Yeah, could I make a question?
Can you make a motion?
Absolutely. I move that we, uh, accept the revisions to the base governance policy. As just read by the superintendent.
Second. Here I ask if there's any more discussion. Okay, Maria, I think we are ready to vote.
Okay, Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
No.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
And Mayor Verga.
Yes.
Motion carrier six two one. And every single one of us, including the noble, got what they wanted in the policy. Just put that on the record. Okay, all right. Thank you for your patience. Okay. Okay, so. Okay, so we are through action. Um. The next item is other communication and discussion, um, an update on the Gloucester Veterans Memorial School Building. I don't have anything to report.
I've already reported and showed you at least one photo from, um, the visit, from the most apps combined. And, uh. Yeah, we have our next building committee meeting on, I wanna say, the eighth, eighth of September. Um. If you haven't been by, uh, the, uh. Wing A, which is on the classroom wing, uh, big jump, it's faced in brick. Was the back. Uh, which is enclosed. And we'll have more updates on, uh, what we're gonna do after that, the next building committee, but it's for games. Uh, budget and on schedule.
I'm giving a little tidbit, I don't know if you did this previously, so stop me if you did, but it was explained to me, and they had a mockup. Of how they were gonna lay a brick on the outside of the saw. So they literally went through, um, this is months ago. Having them put down a brick and figure out how it was to be. And keep it up, put on the building, so that there was this template with which. It would then be installed. That's kinda cool, we've been very thorough about everything. Um, and the other piece is that the city council approved the permanent power. They approved the permanent power permits for National Grid. Uh, which is really important, because, um, that needs to be installed, or that needs to be taken care of. By National Grid to keep us on, on timeline, is if they slip their timeline, it's, it's a problem.
Yeah, it's one of the things that commonly slips in a project like this, so. It's another example, I think it's another example of our private team, uh, doing incredible job on timelines. You know, whether it's procurement, whether that's, you know, bid, whether that's, you know, getting all materials, I mean, it's really considering the. The landscape we're living in these days. And then at, at the same time, related to that, it's just being a budget. You know, you gotta do very little, uh, cutting, because of the project size, um. Having it so well done in this, uh, landscape is really.
I don't know if I, if I said this at the last meeting, but I, at your request, I had spoken to Joe Morocco. Uh, from National Grid, um, because of the, the concern if this is another setback or there, and it really messes up the school opening. concern that this is another setback on their end that really messes up the school opening, uh, so he assured me he was gonna pull off, for this, I mean, he needs to get up to speed on where we are and make sure that we can stay on track, so we'll keep opening each of the fire. I can't make any guarantees that they have, but they sounded like instead of, we can.
On the school committee Facebook page, there are more fun pictures of the staff visiting school that Matt sent me, so, just people towards our school committee Facebook page, there's more fun.
I'll have to talk to Mr. Facko, because he didn't invite me to the tour, um, today, um, and there was an Instagram. And he's not sharing pictures with me either, so. I'm his boss.
Okay, um, so the next item of business is executive session. Will be held for the purpose of discussing a personnel contract, which went to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A, and will return to open session only to adjourn. And I said, second. Okay, Maria, roll call, vote please.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yeah.
Chair Prusa Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
And Mayor Verga.
Yes.
Keith, you know to meet us on Google, right?
Yes.
So, uh, Maria, I just shut this down, right?
Yes, and, um, I will end the meeting, you're not gonna come back to adjourn, right, you're adjourned in executive session.
Well, yeah, we'll adjourn, we, we won't need to come, we'll come back into open session here, um, but I, but there's nothing else for the public, right? Okay, I would just announce that when we're gonna adjourn the meeting, it's not gonna be on, no. Yeah, we're gonna adjourn the meeting, but it will not begin soon, because that's the only business we will take care of after executive session.
We did that last week.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.